It's six o'clock, June ninth, two thousand twenty. I call to order the City of Kennedy's regular scheduled city council meeting. Amanda, would you call though?
Yes, sir. Council Breonna?
President.
Council Lynn? Council Lynn?
Here.
Council Sine? I don't believe he's during the meeting yet. Council Conno?
Here.
Council Meyer?
Here.
All the council signs have joined the meeting.
Okay, the forum is present. Wesley, would you please say the prayer?
Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for continued watching over us and we thank you that you have allowed us to work in the way that we're working to accomplish the task that must be accomplished. We ask that you would be with us, help us to make good decisions, and give us sound counsel that we may move forward with the City of Kennedy. In your son's name, we pray, amen.
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 Amanda, anyone sign up for citizen comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number five. Department reports. Any movement?
I'll take it. I'll check in.
Discussion. Do we have, do we have someone that's gonna give these reports or we just gonna review them?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it. I heard a lot of muscling and then Council Sine is trying to get on the call, so give me just a second. Have you, were you able to get on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Okay, hold on.
Okay. I've been here.
Okay, I'm not sure how I didn't get to you. Okay. Okay, I'll start off with the city secretary report. The city had one termination and no new hires for the month of May. The Kennedy City Hall continues to accept payments through the drop box at the end of the ramp and the front door of our office. Customers can also call and make payments over the phone with a debit or credit card. Late fees will continue to be waived and disconnect suspended until July first. After July first, late fees will be accumulated if utility bill is not paid by July fifteenth. Disconnections will begin on Monday, July twenty-seventh. The city clerk position has been filled. The person in this position will be assisting the public works director as well as the fire department. Her first day was yesterday. And then I will pass it on to Joel, so give me just a second.
Amanda?
Yes, sir.
Amanda. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Hey, do you know why we don't rece- receive reports from you anymore through email?
So, you, you, are you talking about the consent agenda report?
Right. And department head report.
Yes, the department head report. Mr. Lynn had wanted to start doing the packets this way. I've, um, I believe, uh, the first meeting that we did like this, he said he was gonna try this for a couple of months and see how council liked it and then go from there.
Okay. Hey, the format, why has the format changed? I mean, agendas are usually set up for the person that holds the meeting for them to keep up with what's going on. Why did the format change?
Are you talking about how the department reports and city manager reports?
Yes, ma'am.
That was, uh, um, uh, the way Mr. Lynn wanted us to start preparing the agenda.
Okay. Hey, are you aware of any city employees, uh, contacting the city attorney? Referencing, um, who hires and who terminates specific positions?
I am not aware of any, of any, any city employee contacting our attorney.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Joel?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, it's gonna be a short one. Mayor Sutton, council, good evening. We've had a total of sixteen permits for the month of May, thirteen inspections, twenty roll-offs, and I have sent out twelve violation notices. That is all.
Joel?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
A couple, a couple of months ago, you mentioned to me that you were rewriting ordinances. Could you explain that to us, please?
Not necessarily rewriting them, trying to put them ways where it would help us out to, a lot of them have holes in it, to take the council to see, get their approval, to make it where it worked better for us.
Okay. Where are you at with that?
Uh, we're still working, I'm still working on getting them together. We still have to go through, make sure everything looks good to present to council and see how everything is okay with them.
Okay.
Joel, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, your twelve violation letters?
Yes.
Do we have a plan of action, uh, when they come back unclaimed or? What, what are we gonna do with those?
Yes, ma'am. The first major ones I've sent were dilapidated buildings and they are, a lot of them, some have called back, but there are gonna be some that will not have callbacks. They are abandoned properties and they will go through the demolition procedure.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody here from Public Works?
Yes, give me just a second, I'm about to put him on. Okay, Jerry.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'll start with the water treatment plant. Uh, total water produced for the month was forty-four million. Uh, total water loss was a hundred and eighty-four thousand and that comes to about eight percent water loss. And then I'll move to the streets. Service requested, uh, completions was forty-five. We had eight thirty-yard roll-offs and six forty-yard roll-offs that we, uh, called off. And then, uh, on the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, we had no violations for the month of May. Our daily, uh, monthly flow was thirty-seven million. And on the distribution and collection, uh, we're about ninety, maybe ninety-one percent complete with the water line replacement on May Tag. Uh, we had to replace, uh, a sewer line from Elm to Maple that runs through an easement that had collapsed and the manholes were falling in, uh. And that's probably eighty-five, eighty-five percent complete. Uh, we've had leaks at the prison that, uh, kinda put a strain on our water plant, uh, through the month a couple of times, but they've got those leaks fixed. Uh, we put together a packet for Pullen Street for water and sewer line replacement and we're working on that as we go. Uh, we've done some locates, uh, on Escondido for TexDOT, uh, and they have started making some progress on repairing all the drainage issues that, uh, is on them and, uh, hopefully that'll be, uh, completed before too long. We had one new water service put in. We did nine checks for water leaks. We repaired three water leaks. We had three sewer backups, sixty-four sewer maintenance jetty of the sewer main and a hundred and twenty miscellaneous work orders performed by that department. We have, uh, several, several projects, uh, going on that we're looking at or in the middle of construction. Uh, we're looking at the Pullen Street, street complete with curving and the water and sewer line replacement. The section of the DeWitt Bridge water line replacement that will also tie in part of seven forty-three that was, uh, some of that has been done on the seven forty-three side, but when we do the bridge, that seven forty-three side will be complete. And, uh, I've already mentioned the May Tag water line. The phase one at the wastewater treatment plant is all but complete, just a real few minor things. And then phase two at the wastewater treatment plant is about to start. Uh, of course, you know of the, uh, contract that was awarded to Monk. And then we've got the water treatment plant annex, which is almost complete and it is a magnificent job so far on that building and looking forward to getting in it and getting set up for that. Uh, we've, uh, replaced the water line on Graham that come off of May Tag. Uh, we have a, a possible water line extension for our apartment complex on one eighty-one Kennedy Apartments that we're looking at to see what can be done with that. And, uh, we had, uh, emergency repair come up on Park Place. We have a six-inch main that had been washed out by drainage. Um, and, uh, that is, should be complete, uh, repaired probably Tuesday. And when they get through with that, they'll be moving over to the DeWitt Bridge to finish that, to tie up seven forty-three and complete that. And that's all I have for now.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Hey, do, do you guys have any plans for North Third Street?
For the street park, repa- the pavement?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's on my board. Uh, the packets for the, to go out for bid on several of the streets have been turned into city hall.
Okay, how about Lavaca Street?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you have any idea how much affluent we discharged back in May?
Uh, from the water or wastewater?
Wastewater.
Okay, uh, thirty-seven million. Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven million?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I'm here. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm ready.
All right, thank, uh, so I have three reports. I'll start off with, uh, our emergency management report first. Uh, we continue monitoring COVID. Of course, uh, Texas now has a little over seventy-five thousand cases, uh, eighteen, eighteen hundred deaths. Uh, Texas averaging now about thirteen hundred new cases every day, uh, in the state. Um, Karnes County's still nothing reported here, uh, other than the ones that have previously been reported and those were all travel related. So for right now, uh, nothing new in Karnes County. The rest of Texas is seeing a, a big spike in cases. Um, we did have an issue with our emergency siren. Uh, it does sound, but it does not turn. We're looking at some options to get it repaired. While looking at it, we did, uh, realize that the building it sits on is probably unstable and so we're looking at some options to either move it or do something else with it. Um, then hopefully at the end of this week, we'll actually be able to get it down and see if we can get it repaired. We believe the repair should be easy to do on the siren and then we'll have to look for another way to mount it. Um, hurricane season has started. Uh, we already had it, had our first, um, named storm in the Gulf. Our current models from NOAA are showing that we probably have a higher than average hurricane season, so, uh, I am starting to prepare for case we have something here, reviewing our emergency plans, um, make sure that everything's ready to go. Uh, if anybody has any questions about our emergency plans, I'd like to see them, just get with me, I can show them to you. Um, what that, we do have plans for the entire county. On the police report, um, we do, we continue to follow our COVID guidelines, uh, trying to limit citizen contact as much as possible. Um, however, our calls for service have started increasing, uh, with the state opening back up. We're seeing a lot more, we are getting more calls for service, um, that's going back up. We did get, uh, hired our new officer, they all approved, uh, last, in the last meeting, uh, the funding. We brought the officer, Mikado has come back to work for us again. He used to work for us and he's back and we're very happy to have him. Um, starting next week, I'll be able to move him tonight and start our traffic unit that I discussed with you last time. Um, they'll be focusing on trucks on Main Street, Fifth Street, seven nineteen, uh, as well as other moving violations and dangerous violations. So that should start next Monday. I'll make sure and put out some social media that we're doing it, give people some notice that we're coming. State white training is starting to, uh, open back up around the state. It's still hit and miss. Uh, as soon as possible, I'll get him, all that same officers sent off to the mental health officer training, uh, as soon as more is available. Right now, it just isn't anything, but we're watching for it. Uh, last meeting, y'all approved, uh, grant request. Uh, we have got those submitted. Uh, hope to have that in September, October. Uh, we'll see how that goes. We are still continuing our birthdays, uh, the birthday parades. My current plan is to continue that as long as the governor has the no more than ten people in a, a rule. Um, once that's phased out, then we can phase out the birthday parades. We did nine of them last month along with the high school seniors parade and there was also a parade around John Paul Nursing Home that we also assisted with. Uh, all of our officers this last month did their mandatory weapons qualifications. Uh, we got that done. And I moved our speed monitors from seven nineteen and seventy-two over on the Eighth Street and Cottonwood. Uh, those are both streets that I've received complaints uh, from residents about speeders, so I've put the monitors up over there. Our animal control, nothing really new there except for the, uh, the Maine Society has opened up their new facility, uh, which is allowing us to, uh, move more animals, uh, over there, so that's really good. Uh, our new train, our new officer has completed his field training, but he has not been able to go to the state training because, not holding it because of COVID. The state has waived the requirement to have that training until, uh, the COVID issue is resolved. Um, and that, Mr. Mayor, is my report. If you have any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, somebody else, go ahead.
I have a question. This, this is Brenda.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that new officer now in school and it goes back into swinging again, is that officer gonna be patrolling the morning and afternoon traffic?
Start our traffic unit?
Yes, the, well, yes, the new one that you get hired on for the traffic unit, is he gonna be at the schools once the schools start opening?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, once the school starts back up, I can task him for that. The main, our main per- purpose for him, uh, is for the truck routes. I get, that is probably the number one complaint I get from citizens in Kennedy. Um, and so that'll be his main focus, but absolutely, once school starts up, we'll, we'll task him with, uh, morning and afternoon school zones.
Are they mostly morning? They have a, they have, it's really bad in the mornings out there.
Yeah, the morning seems to be worse, uh, early on in the school year is even worse and then it kinda gets better as the school goes along. But yes, ma'am, I'm on behalf of you that.
Perfect, thank you.
Chief, I got a question, chief. Um, did we ever, did we ever get with TexDOT C about maybe putting signs with lights on them or bigger signs so these truck drivers can better understand where the truck route is?
I do know the city manager and the street department are working on that. That may be a better question for him. I'm not really sure where they got with that.
Okay. I know we brought it up, but I never had got any, uh, response back to it. I thought maybe it's still being looked into.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I have a question or two.
Yes, sir.
Hey, what's our crime rate look like? It's going up, going down?
Is there anything in particular you're asking about, sir?
I'm just trying to figure out, since we don't get a report from you anymore, uh, we can physically read, we rely on questions alone. I, I wanna know, is, is crime, are, are we?
Sure.
Worked with as a goal? Or are we just winging it? What are we doing? Is the crime going down or is it going up?
It depends on what category you look at. Our burglaries and thefts have remained fairly static. Um, I kinda had thought with COVID that we would see some decline, but it's really kinda stayed static. Uh, calls for service fluctuate, uh, depending on the month. Um, our arrests, uh, are pretty much static, have been pretty much across the board, uh, stayed the same. Uh, I haven't really seen, the, the only real decrease that, uh, has happened over the last few months because of COVID was our, we slowed down on traffic stops trying to avoid the COVID. Um, and that number, so that's numbers a little bit lower, but as far as the thefts, burglaries, those kinda things, they're, they're pretty well, uh, pretty much stable across the board each month.
That's the average per month that we have on those?
Uh, for our burglaries and thefts, we are running an average of sixteen a month, uh, for both those categories. Some months it's as low as ten, some months it's as high as twenty-five, but the average is sixteen.
Are we doing anything special to combat that?
Uh, we have so, we have, uh, made several cases for, uh, burglaries and theft, uh, suspects for that. Um, the problem with property crimes is that they're crimes of opportunity. They, it's very, it's very difficult to, to prevent those unless you have patterns. I have not seen any patterns of thefts. Um, we did a few months ago, we had some patterns where they were breaking into, uh, stores where they were kicking in the glass, uh, some of our stores and we were able to make arrests on those cases. Um, but as far as the regular thefts and burglaries, there's some of them, they're just, they're crimes of opportunity, but sometimes it's difficult to prevent.
I can understand that, but we are working to improve that.
Oh, absolutely. We, uh, we make a lot of cases. Actually, our investigation doing a really good job, uh, making those cases that you'll, if you watch some of our Facebook stuff, you'll see, uh, we're making arrests on those cases. Um, unfortunately, what you see is repeat offenders, uh, the same people, we arrest them and then, you know, we'll arrest them again and you'll, you'll probably see that on our Facebook, you'll see some of the same people arrested over and over again.
No, I, I rely on a report. I don't really go to that Facebook page, but I haven't received a report, so I, I'm just gonna have to reach out to you, I guess, every month and get the answers.
Whenever you, anything you need, sir, just let me know.
I'll do it. Um, hey, what are we doing for, you know, to make sure we're following our, uh, the use of force policy with the City of Kennedy?
So, we do have a, a, uh, we do have a, a very strong use of force policy. Um, all of our officers wear body cams and they record every event. Uh, all complaints are investigated thoroughly. Um, the, our supervisors do, um, as part of the racial profile and they do randomly review videos, uh, as well. I, you know, knock on wood, I have not had any complaints of, uh, in quite a while on, on any of that kind of issue, but any complaint we do get would be thoroughly investigated. Uh, our process does require me to investigate and send a written reply to anybody who complains, so, uh, they would see what the result was.
Okay. Hey, I had some, um, I've had a couple of people contacting the chief in reference to Jamie Mayberry's case, missing persons?
Yes, sir.
Is that an open case? Are we investigating? Is it closed? What's going on with that case? Do you, is there anything you can share with us?
No, I know, um, I would say last, it was about this time last year, I believe, was, um, we were contacted by the media. Uh, I did have the case pulled out and reviewed. Um, uh, Texas Rangers came down, we went back through the case again. Uh, we did a couple more interviews. Uh, we just couldn't shake anything loose that, um, could lead us anywhere else. I just, you know, every now and then I'll get calls from somebody who'll tell me that they think this person was old or that person was old, but we still, that, no one has, we've not been able to shake any information loose on it. Uh, but yes, we have, we have gone back and, and reviewed it again. Um, we even went back and looked at some evidence as well to try to see if we could shake anything on it.
So is the case active or is it cold?
No, it, it right now would be considered inactive. Uh, it's not closed. It's, you never really close a missing person, you just consider it inactive. Uh, if any new evidence comes up or information comes up. Yeah, some people call it a cold case, but the actual term is, it's considered inactive.
Okay, so is it inactive or active?
It, it would be considered inactive right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Hey, uh, last, certainly not least, did your department in March, April, or May have any unusual expenses?
I'm not sure what you mean, sir.
Was there anything that usually doesn't happen during a month that you guys had, had to absorb the cost on? Repairs, maintenance?
We, we did, I think if you're asking about, we did have the one vehicle that we had, um, uh, a, a cracked engine in it that took us, I think we had to pay to repair. Uh, that's the most, only one I could think of.
Yeah, could you tell us about that?
Uh, so we had one of our, uh, police vehicles that, um, it had a cracked, it's best I know, I'm not a mechanic, and had some sort of cracking engine. The coolant went into the oil and therefore there was no coolant, the car overheated. Um, so we did, we talked about the cost and whether or not it would be worth to repair. We ended up deciding we could repair it. If, if we repaired it, we could keep it for another couple of years. Um, and so that's what we did and I'm hoping that, that now that we have that and work on the engine, we'll be able to keep it for a couple more years.
Okay, what was that cost?
Uh, eight thousand four hundred something. I think Amanda can give you a better number on it. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay. Hey, was that car occupied when that occurred?
Uh, it was being, uh, on patrol that day, yes. The officer said he started having trouble. Yeah, the officer said he had started having trouble with the car. It was acting funny, tried to get it to the shop. Um, and it broke down and we finally got it there and they said, yeah, all the coolant had leaked out, but it was, it had leaked into the, uh, oil.
Got you. Do we fill out a report, chief, when we drive these cars daily?
They have a checklist, they do. Uh, when they start the day, they're supposed to be checking all the oil and water and uh, that kinda stuff on a daily basis. Yes, sir.
Do you mind sending the, the specific report for couple of weeks during, before that car burned up to myself and city council?
I can check it, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Chief, council room, just one more time. Another question. Do, do y'all have a plan in place for COVID when the parks open up? There is a limit of ten to gathering. Uh, how are you gonna, are, are you gonna monitor the activity going on with the basketball courts, knowing that a lot of people like to go out there, play basketball, wait on the bench for games, not being around each other? And over the weekend, I was informed that there were some people on the court. Uh, do we have officers going out there patrolling, making sure that everything is being taken care of and that they're obeying that sign that says park closed?
I can sure check on it. I don't know about that specific, that, what you're running into though is the same, is there, is they open everything up? Everybody just kinda goes back out and, and they do their thing. Um, I, I'm not sure on that one. I'll definitely make sure the guys keep an eye on it though, on the park. I, I wasn't sure on that, I wasn't aware of that one.
Okay, yeah, I got a few complaints saying that they thought the park was closed, but they saw people on the basketball court. So, I, the last I was aware of, the basketball court is part of the park, so.
Yes.
And it says on the side, it's closed.
The only thing open is, yeah, the only thing open is the, uh, walking track.
Okay.
Right.
Is there any way you maybe could put that on the Facebook page and let people know that the park is still closed until further notice and when it opens? Then put it on your page and let everybody know park is open, COVID rules still apply and so forth from there?
I'd be happy to do that, sir.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Chief, chief, this is Cindy. I've got a question on animal control.
Okay.
How many animals were picked up in the month of May?
Uh, duh, 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 hold on one second. You want dogs, or cats, or both?
Both.
Okay. Uh, we had fifteen dogs and sixteen cats.
Okay.
But thirty-one, if my math is right?
How does, uh, how does one, like, I know we have stray animals in every part of town. What is the one supposed to do when they see stray animals? Do they call animal control? Does animal control come out? What is the process?
The simplest process is to call City Hall, uh, and they will do a work order for the animal control officers to go out there and look for them. Um, with the cats, normally what we end up having to do, or dogs sometimes have to do, is they have to go set traps for them. Uh, but the simplest process is just call City Hall, and they'll do a work order for animal control to go out there.
Okay, 'cause I, I did get a call about, they did contact animal control, they drove up the street, never stopped and talked to anybody. Um, so I, I, do they go out? I don't know if they go out and look for animals, but do they drive around town? What do they do during the day?
Yeah, so if they're not actually on a call, uh, they have, uh, duties that, they have to take care of the animals at the pound, of course, maintenance of the pound, uh, and then they do patrol, uh, they put out, um, traps, they go collect their traps up. Um, those kinda, they also, we picked up sixteen dead animals last month. Um, they also take animals to the vet, so they do that. Um, we're taking the animals to the rescue groups, to the Humane Society, so they do a lot of those things.
Okay, so just call City Hall and hope they come out there?
The main thing, if they want to talk to somebody, if they want the officer to talk to them, uh, please just tell them, tell the, uh, when you call, tell them, would you have them come see me? Uh, 'cause a lot of times what they'll get is, hey, they said there's a loose dog in this area, they go look for loose dogs, but they don't necessarily stop, talk to anybody. So, you know, tell, uh, just tell them, I would like to see somebody, yes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Hey, I just got a text from Amanda. She says there is a public comment. Can we go back to public comments?
Thank you. Okay. So, the public comment reads, "Good evening, Honorable Mayor James D. Sutton, City Councilor, City Secretary, City Manager, and City Attorney. I first would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share this public comment. I spoke with City Secretary Heinz yesterday afternoon, requesting that each council member, along with Mayor Sutton, City Manager, and City Attorney be given copies of documents I handed to her. A copy of those documents were given to her as well. These documents I wanted you all to have before tonight's meeting. She assured me that you would all receive an email of the documents. That way you could, y'all would read and go over before and/or during my public comments. These documents will be a great deal of help as you decide to consider and take possible action on Agenda Item Nine. I thank you all for doing what you can for our city. It's not an easy task. I now know how it is as a citizen and, and as a city council member. You all took an oath to protect, serve, and abide the law of the Texas Local Government Code. So help you God, I pray that you all honor that oath. Once again, thank you all for giving me this opportunity. Have a good night."
Thank you. I guess I have a question with the, for the city manager?
Yes, sir.
If we can. Can we go back like that once we pass a public, a public comment? Is that a, can we do that legally, or do we have to take a vote on that?
No, sir, not under the format the Attorney General and the Governor set up, the telephoning meetings. The cutoff time exists for a reason and a purpose, and anything that comes in after that cutoff time cannot be read or, or stated. Um, you know, the mayor certainly has autonomy to move items around on the agenda, but once we've moved on from something like that, you can't go back on it in this particular format that we're in. That is, that is arguable at the AG's office.
Who was it? Amanda was?
Uh, it's, it's a, but it's a public. You know, whether we can go back or not, that's, that's what we can and can't do, but really, do we really wanna deny a resident? The only thing, the only issue that it really presents, Councilor, at this point, is that if six other residents send the City Secretary a public comment right now or later on in the meeting, we have to allow them to go back to that section as well, because we extended the courtesy to one person. So, you know, that's, that's really.
I have a question. I have a question. When was that comment submitted?
That's what I was, I was trying to say. Mr. Lynn, this comment was actually sent to me yesterday afternoon. I didn't realize this was his actual public comment. I thought you, it was an email he was sending to the council to verify that I had sent the documents to council. And, and so, once the meeting started, he communicated with me that, that indeed was his public comment, so I texted Mayor Sutton and I asked him if we could please go back to that line, because that was my mistake and my misunderstanding on the public comment. I apologize for the confusion.
No, that's fine. As long as it was submitted in the right timeframe, we're good. And I would, I would, I would never really object to public comments anyway, because in a transparent government, the residents should have a say.
Oh, yes, I agree. I just wanted to know if that was, we, we can actually do that without being penalized in some sort of formal way, uh, later on down if someone didn't agree to it, or something, we're still covered.
Well, if, if, if another person, the issue we'll get into resides in consistency. So, if we get to Item thirteen and somebody else submits a comment that would have been, uh, you know, if this comment had been submitted after the deadline, and that's the key, if it had been submitted after the deadline, and we did this, we would have to extend that courtesy to everyone. But because that comment was submitted, it was submitted and received by the City Secretary within the deadline, then the mayor moving back to that is well within his authority to do so on an agenda. So, we're good.
All right, we're good. That'll work. Who was it from, Amanda, do you know? Did it have a name?
I'm sorry, I said the name was from Albert Valderamo.
City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, let me say, before I get into this a little bit, um, I know Mayor, you've made quite a few comments, actually been the same comment to every department head, and I appreciate that. I just want you to know, I do appreciate it. However, I need to clarify one thing for the council, and for yourself, and for all the residents. Whenever department heads prepare reports, and they go verbatim into detail in the reports, and they put them into a packet, the packet gets very large, and most people won't read the packets. However, the other issue with that is transparency. Most council members and mayors will not engage in a meeting whenever they have everything in front of them. So, the idea behind doing this was twofold. It's to get the council and the mayor engaged in the meeting in a constructive way, it's to get the department heads engaged in the meeting in a constructive way, and it's to provide transparency to the residents of Kennedy as to what's going on. So far, as of tonight, it has accomplished its purpose. Each of the councilors have asked questions. Mayor, you've asked quite a few questions. The department heads have done an outstanding stellar job tonight answering your questions, and the residents of the City of Kennedy have more transparency right now than they've had in a long time, as far as these reports go. The entire composition of the reports, Mayor and Council, is always available for your request. We keep copies here at City Hall. All you have to do is ask the City Secretary for a copy of the report. She'll be happy to email it to you, or print you off a copy and hand it to you. So, those reports do exist. Uh, that being said, uh, I try to keep my report as, as, as simplest as possible. Um, one of the things we've been doing in the city is, is whenever I was hired, uh, I made the comment that the things we would do would be what would be for better for the city. Maybe not what people wanna agree to, but what's best for the city. One of those things is staffing. Uh, we've made some moves within the, within the city. Uh, we moved an individual who, uh, I believe was, uh, would be better served to a different department. Uh, this individual seems to, or has indicated that they have liked being moved to that department. So, we now have a superintendent, uh, and a groundskeeper in the Parks Department. Uh, we, we moved our street superintendent over. It was a lateral move. Uh, the move cost him no money, no seniority, no nothing, it was just a lateral move over. Uh, and, and he seemed to like that, and I've gotten some reports from some things he's had his eyes on, and, uh, I, I seem to think he's doing a fairly decent job over there. Um, that did open up the, uh, uh, position of superintendent for streets, which we have posted on TML, and we posted in the paper, as well as we posted it internally. Uh, as of today, we've only received one application for that, and it's an internal applicant to whom we will be interviewing. Um, I'm gonna pause for just a quick second there. Uh, it's come to my attention from several councilors, uh, and several employees, uh, within the City of Kennedy, that the City of Kennedy historically has never, uh, interviewed internal people, and it must be said for those employees who are listening tonight, anytime we post a position internally, we owe the employee the duty to interview them, whether they feel they're qualified for the position or not. I will always interview an internal candidate, always. I, I will never refuse them an interview. So, yeah, that has to be said. Uh, that being said, we, uh, had posted the position for a code enforcement helper as well. Um, we did receive three applications for that. One was internal and two were external. We scheduled the two external applicants. Uh, one person, uh, canceled and did not reschedule, and one person was interviewed. The internal candidate, we will be interviewing this week as well. And so, we have that. Now, that position is, is since closed. Uh, we've also, uh, have the Parks and Recreation position still ongoing. Uh, we received a whole bunch of applications in the beginning for the Parks and Recreation Director position. Most of them were not even in the ballpark qualification-wise. We narrowed it down to two. I did a phone interview with both of those. I quickly ruled out one right away. The second one had lots of promise. Um, so we went ahead, and my policy is very simple. I will do the background check, I will do the employment reference check before I'll schedule a second interview. Uh, if they wash out in those two things, I'm not gonna waste my time talking to them. Uh, right now, we are waiting on the, uh, employment reference checks to come back on that individual before I will decide whether or not to schedule that person for a second interview. Uh, in the meantime, I have another individual I'm interviewing this week as a first interview for it. Uh, this person's a little closer uh, than the other person, and then I have a third candidate that I'm going to be working with scheduling an interview for with that as well. I hope to wrap this up as quickly as possible, uh, but COVID nineteen kinda put a damper on being able to do any face-to-face interviews, so I kinda shelved it a little bit just to get us through that time, because the needs of the city, uh, that we had going on were more pressing than doing interviews and hiring for a position that I know I won't need until August. Uh, so, that's where we are with that one. Uh, as far as, uh, some other things that are going on in the city, we have, uh, a while back, uh, shortly right before I got here, uh, either the council, uh, or the mayor, or the interim City Manager, I'm not sure which one of those three categories of individuals did this, but they reached out to the law, our law firm, and asked them to draw out their personnel manual. Um, so the personnel manual was sent to me, uh, about a month and a half ago. I read every jot, every tittle, made the revisions that needed to be remade in it, and then I sent it back to the attorney for their review of the revision. Uh, the attorney has, uh, reviewed it. She had very few, uh, revisions that she needed to make from what I changed in the policy manual. She made some suggestions. I went back over her suggestions. Uh, I sent back to her my thoughts on her suggestion, and right now it's waiting on the attorneys to clean it up and send me a clean copy. Once I get the clean copy, I'll reread it, uh, to make sure everything's in line, and then from there, we're gonna give it to council and the mayor for your review. And our hope is to get this on the July agenda, uh, so you all can, uh, vote on this manual at the July regular meeting. So, we're getting that one done pretty close. Um, in addition to that, uh, the last meeting, it was mentioned about an interlocal agreement between the city and the county. Uh, I have since received the, uh, attorney's first draft of the interlocal agreement, and, uh, I'm going over and reviewing that to see if, uh, it meets the criteria that several council members mentioned in that meeting. Uh, if it does meet that criteria, uh, I'll send it back to them, make sure it's a clean copy, have them send it back to me, and then we'll send it to, we'll present it to council, uh, for their adoption at that point. So, uh, that's kinda where we are on that one as well. We've posted the RFQ for City Attorney. It runs through June the seventeenth at five o'clock. Uh, we've already had one, we've already received one, um, interest in it, uh, from a, a firm out of San Marcos. Uh, but, uh, it's staying sealed until we get them all and see who all responds. Um, in addition to that, uh, the other issue on the last agenda that we looked at was a grant writer. I've been talking to some, uh, people in the grant business. Uh, the grants that we're looking to go after, uh, have various restrictions on how a grant writer is procured. Uh, the, uh, we're looking at the downtown revitalization program, and the, uh, FAST program, which stands for Fire Ambulance, Car, Truck. Uh, that has one set of requirements for a grant writer, and I'm in the process of getting that taken care of. And then we're also going after a Texas Water Development Board grant and loan, as well as a USDA grant and loan, and then a general land officer hazardous mid-grant. Uh, those also have, uh, another set of procurement requirements, and I actually have an individual who has, um, agreed to help me make sure we get the right verbiage on that. They have many years' experience writing these things, and, uh, I'm letting them take care of that one there. Um, beyond that, the next thing we have is we have all the projects. I'm not sure if you all have your, um, uh, pads with you or not, but if you do, there's a sheet called Project Expenditures in there, um, and it's a very long sheet. Um, that sheet has basically all the projects that we're funding right now, that are of major importance to the city. Uh, it begins with the Carrizo Water Line, and we have the street department, the East Main Drainage, the sports complex, uh, the wastewater treatment plant phases one and two, uh, the reverse osmosis train C, uh, the manhole evaluation replacement program is on there as well, the taxiway lighting improvement, the civic center, and, uh, the Mayor Music Festival. Um, and we go through this sheet, uh, essentially where we are on things is, uh, right now, there were, there was a budget apparently set for the Carrizo Water Line. It was a temporary budget. Uh, it was set fairly low, and we've already exceeded that budget, uh, by more than double, uh, on that, but that project has yet, uh, the costs on that project have yet to be, uh, potentially finalized. Uh, Hanson Engineering promised the City of Kennedy that they would take care of that, and I've been working with Hanson, and, uh, one of the engineers from Hanson has sent me a, a copy that I'm going over and looking at, taking a look to see what seems reasonable, what seems unreasonable, and, uh, once we get that taken care of, and we find out we'll have a base, a baseline cost, what we think this project's gonna, uh, cost us, and so we'll know what kind of money we need to be pursuing. Um, in addition to that, the sports complex is, uh, getting close to being finished. We still have a few things that need to be done on it. Um, the parking lot needs to be taken care of, and, uh, and all that. Uh, we've still got the, um, what do they call them, blockouts, where the, uh, sun shade posters go, and still needs to be done. We've got a little bit of concrete work that needed to be done around, uh, Bu- Building A and that as well. There's some other things that are, that I'm gonna call wants, and not necessarily needs, uh, that, that we can look at doing at a later date, but in order to get the, the complex open at tonight with, uh, Building C, the restrooms and that going to you guys to prove to go out for bed, and the parking lot, those are the major, major things that have to be done before we can actually open the gates and let the kids play on the fields. Um, right now, that project is skilled still, with everything that is projected. with everything that is projected. And that's important that you understand that. It's with everything that is projected and everything that has been spent, it is still projected to come in about two point six over budget. Um, so that's something we're still watching and trying to manage, uh, each, each day and each week. Uh, as, um, Mr. Higgins stated, uh, wastewater treatment phase one is, uh, about ninety-eight percent done. I mean, they've got some punch list items they're working on there. Uh, and that, that particular line item had a surplus in it. Um, wastewater phase two, uh, we're looking at that one as being currently underfunded. Uh, what we will do is once phase one is completely done, we will come back to council and we'll do the budget amendment to move the balance that you all allocated to phase one, and we're going to move it to phase two. When we do that, phase two will be properly funded, uh, and should not go over budget. Um, so, um, the R O train C is, is getting along its way. As, as Mr. Higgins said, the building does look nice. I've been up there and looked at it. Um, it really is a nice building up there. Uh, the things they're doing up there, I, I like what they're doing as far as the aesthetics and that that I see. Uh, I believe this is going to help the city of Kennedy out quite a bit going forward until we get this other major project done. Um, so, and we've got all that done there for the project. So before I get into presenting the financials, anybody have any questions over any of that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You have the civic center on there. We haven't done anything with that other than buy the land, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The civic center is on there. It's in the financials. Um, so that's why it's on there. And then what I did was I went out and projected since we haven't even discussed much about a building size or anything, but I know there are, uh, there's two sets of, uh, plans for a civic center building. One was done by one set of engineers and was about a fifteen, sixteen thousand square foot building, and the other was done by Hanson. It was about a twenty-two thousand square foot building. I just roughly calculated, you know, twenty-two thousand square foot building at roughly a, a base cost of seventy-five dollars a square foot to construct, just to have an idea of a number that we might be looking at, uh, when we get to that point. Um, but it is on there because it's a project we will be undertaking and getting taken care of.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we haven't done anything. We haven't, other than buy the land, we haven't spent any money on. This is just projected what you think we might spend on it when we decide to finally do it. Is that right?
Right. The, except for the, uh, year-to-date amount on that, the year-to-date was, uh, two twenty-seven, three eighty-seven, twelve. That actually is money that was spent on that, that was coded to that account. So, but that's just a year, that's a year-to-date number from October of last year. So, uh, we haven't really spent any money on this project for quite a while. I just need to take a look at a number and figure out, you know, where could we possibly be on this one? And, uh, so those latter numbers on that one are just me trying to project that and trying to get a good cost estimate to, as a beginning point, when we sit down and we talk about what do we want for the city? How do we want this to look? That kind of thing. We already have a number in our mind that we can look at, so.
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
East Main Street, how long are the citizens going to have to live like that?
I need you to elaborate a little bit more what live like that means, Mayor, please.
Well, certainly, I think that their road, their utilities, their drainage, do we have any projected day for completion?
Well, we have two projects on East Main, Mayor. I'm sure you're aware of that. Uh, one was the drainage and one is the road. Um, the drainage part of it is on the backend of everything. Um, we have another engineer working on it. Uh, this is the third Hanson engineer to work on this project. Uh, this particular individual has more expertise on this. So he basically is almost redesigning everything. So he's almost gone back to square one, but he's made leaps and bounds since he's been working on this project. Um, we talk about this project once a week, and we've come up with some things that we find that are contributors to the issues down there. And we're in the process of working on, uh, resolving the root cause problems of East Main. Uh, when we get it done, we'll get it done. Uh, I'm not going to put a timeline on it like a lot of people did. Uh, what I'm looking at is I want this thing resolved. I want the root, root problems taken care of. Uh, when we walk away from East Main, I want the residents of East Main to be able to look at this and say, hey, it was worth it. Um, you know, I, I feel for them, uh, that they've had to endure what they've had to endure. But this project's been going on since July of twenty nineteen, Mayor, and, and no offense, twenty nineteen predated me. Um, since I've had this southern engineer on it, we have moved a lot faster than this project did before I got here.
If there's anything... It's, it's safe to say we got better people on this, um, project now. We have better oversight. The citizens are going to get what they should have gotten to begin with the first time. But at the same time, my concern is what is it going to cost us extra if we have to, when it's all said and done? Do we have a number on that, sir? I mean, whatever it costs, we're going to finish it. They deserve this. They waited long, long time, and we're going to put pedal to the metal and get this complete. And hopefully when it's all said and done, it's exactly what they envisioned or what they hoped for. And they won't have to be enduring this anymore. But what else is going to be done that's going to be changed down there than what we already have?
Well, first off, you know, we still have about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left in that budget, um, for just the drainage. Um, so we've got a little bit of money there to spend. Um, one of the things that we're doing down there is, um, the, uh, the engineer has recommended and they're putting in, um, what do you call it? Give me a second.
While you're looking for that, do we have anybody from Hanson on? Amanda?
We have one gentleman, but I don't think he's dealing more with the sports complex than anything else. But I will unmute him and see if he can give any insight on what y'all are asking.
He, uh, he's putting in junction boxes.
Junction boxes, okay. That suppresses the water down there.
Uh, one of the things he did that nobody else did on this project was, was really interesting. Um, when we had the, that first rain, and I'll go all the way back to that because that was my first rain here in Kennedy. And, um, uh, I just couldn't understand, just, you know, rain's rain. When we had that, when I drove around that night and I saw what I saw, when we had that second rain, I was out in that rain. I mean, I, I went home completely soaked worse than the ground. And I went down to East Main and walked East Main in the rain. And I watched it flood. I watched the drainage system not work. I watched what was done not work. And the one thing that this engineer did when I got ahold of him and I was talking to him was he pulled all sorts of data that nobody else pulled. And he took that data and he looked at that in comparison to what we were doing. Uh, and I say we, uh, the engineers up to that point. And the rain that it was designed to, to handle. And he, he found out that really the design is not adequate for a, a thirty-year or a fifty-year storm. Uh, maybe a ten, fifteen, maybe a twenty-year storm. So his concern was we don't want water coming out of the drainage back up on the street. We want it to stay in the drain, the purpose. Stay in the drains and, and be funneled away. So he's got these junction boxes that he's putting in with bolt-dyeed lids so that on those, uh, chances, whenever we have, uh, that abnormal rain, the one that exceeds the, the twenty-year storm, that, that water stays in those drains. He's also designing a curb and gutter system that is going to be designed to help funnel water away, uh, and, and, and down, I think it's Waverly is the name of the street down there as well, uh, as going down the way the drains were set up. In addition to all of that, what we've, what he's discovered is that part of this problem down on East Main is being contributed from behind the residents on the one side where it always floods. There, there's water coming in. It's being diverted there. And so what we're going to do is there's a city alley back there, and we're going to cut a trench in there to help divert water away so it doesn't even get to the resident. Right now, he's just not certain where he wants to funnel that water. And he's looking at that right now, and he's studying that kind of stuff. So we are finding all these different things should have been done from day one back in twenty nineteen. Now, his, history's history. Today, this is where we are, and we're moving forward. And when we're done, we're going to have a better road down there than what was originally designed. Originally, the design was to raise the road, which doesn't make any sense to anybody. And he even agrees it doesn't make sense. He's going to lower the road. And that way the water drains where it's supposed to drain. That way the drainage systems do what they're designed to do. At all in all, he's gone down there a couple of times whenever there's been some water, and he's noticed that the things they've already started doing is making an impact down there. The East Main residents are, are seeing some relief. Not the relief they need, not the relief they deserve just yet. But we're working progress to getting there. So when we're said and done with East Main, it's, it's going to be good.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? Yeah, I have one more. Gary mentioned earlier, you guys did some emergency work.
You got the email on that.
Did, uh, you, did you submit a certificate about the emergency with an itemized cost for everything to the mayor?
Didn't ask for it.
What's that?
Didn't ask for it. You got what you, I... Mayor, I sent you and the council an email, just like I said I would. So I did everything I said I would do.
Is it a yes or a no? Did you send that to the mayor or not?
Answered your question.
Did you, well, if you didn't, you violated ordinance twelve nineteen oh six because it's clear as day that you should do that in an emergency and you're spending money. So I want to know where those are because I did not receive them.
I sent an email with the, with the cost to the city council and the mayor.
Did you submit a certificate like the ordinance asked for?
Look at your email, Mayor. Quit going back and forth with me. We got business to do instead of...
Oh, you were so defiant. It is unbelievable. Did you send the certificate or not?
I sent you what I had, Mayor.
So you did not send the certificate to the mayor?
Are you saying you saw the email?
I'm, I'm saying you not sent the...
Saying you saw the email. Did you see the email or not, Mayor?
Did you send the certificate or did you not send the certificate?
I'm done talking about it.
Send the certificate.
I'm done talking about it.
Of course you are. You sit up here and tell everybody these falsehoods, but you, you, you don't even do what the ordinance says to do. It's plain as day. It says, send the certificate with an itemization of the expenses to the mayor immediately. That's what it says. You know it and you didn't, you didn't do it, and now you want to change the ordinance. Bottom line, play by the rules.
I wish you would.
I can't believe the city council allows a man to act this way that's a paid employee.
Any other questions?
They're working for, for a reason. When, when can I check the certificate? He refuses to answer and council sits there and allows it. Wow.
Are there any other questions from under the financials? Okay. Council, you have the financials. Okay. This month, what I did was we did reduce the financials a little bit, but we added something to the financials you have not been getting. We added the tax pool account list to the financials. Uh, I did do a spreadsheet for you guys. It works things down pretty, um, right. On there, we have the, uh, the, uh, li- the available liquidity of the city. Um, that available liquidity is the tax pool accounts. Uh, that balance shows you what we have in our tax pool accounts. That's our investment accounts that we have with the city. So right now, uh, we have, uh, thirteen thousand nine hundred five dollars, nine hundred and eighty-six just in tax pool. And then we have cash in the bank as of nine o'clock this morning, five point five million. So our total cash liquidity, liquidity is about nineteen point four million dollars. What that simply means is if we need money, we get it. Um, and, and so just to show you all where we are, and I know y'all haven't been receiving that. Um, the revenues for the city, uh, as we look at that, uh, again, this month, uh, we, we're about sixty-six point six seven percent through our budget year. So about two-thirds of the way through. So our revenue should be about two-thirds of the way through. Uh, the general fund revenue is underperforming, but just barely. Uh, and the water and sewer revenue is underperforming, uh, a little bit, uh, more so. Uh, a lot of that's due to the COVID nineteen and, and the absence of late fees and, and that, and that we're being more lenient with people paying their bills on time and that kind of thing. Our total revenues for the month totaled about fifteen point four million dollars between the two accounts. Um, so we, we had, we took in about fifteen million dollars. Uh, our expenditures in the general fund, well, they should be right around sixty-six point six seven percent, but they're sitting around sixty-one point two two. So they're actually outperforming their budget. We're spending less money than we should in the general fund. And the water and sewer kind is spending a lot less money than what they should be at this point in time. Um, so we're, we're really doing good on watching what we spend. So it's counter, it's, it's counterbalancing the lack of the revenues. Um, for the month, for the year-to-date, we're sitting at right around a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in what traditional businesses would call a profit or loss. Uh, but we're a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to the goods. We have a net increase, uh, so far this year. So all in all, the city is actually, uh, pretty solvent and, and going well financially as of right now. Um, you know, that today's not really our concern. Our concerns are going to be going forward uh, in the future, um, when the oil money runs out. So those are where our plans are. Anyway, in a nutshell, that's our finances for the month.
What are we doing? I mean, are we just not doing anything? Is that how we're saving that money in water and sewer?
What do you mean, Mayor?
I mean, the money didn't just increase. We're not spending, right? So we save a bunch of money and not do any work because there's a big difference.
I mean, I'm, I'm really not following the question. I mean, I didn't say the money increased. I mean, and we, and we covered all the things that's being done and what money was spent on it. So I'm, I don't understand the question either.
The question is, there's money in there for water main and for sewer main and for manhole replacement. Those things are not being done. They came to a halt. DeWitt Street, he was told to put it out for bid back in March. It didn't go back out for bid. It's still not done. That's why we save money. We don't do anything. So are we going to save a bunch of money and not do anything? Because we're talking about a thirty million dollar water project. It's not going to be really good if our system won't hold it. So are we...
Well, Mayor...
Do any of that?
Uh, uh, I'm pretty certain we're doing stuff. I mean, I, I'm not sure if you listened to Mr. Higgins' report, but, uh, he listed a whole bunch of things that they've been doing around the city. Uh, you know, they're working. They're working very diligently doing things. So where your perception is, do you understand what a P and L is?
Yes. Do you understand that you're finishing projects where, that were started a year ago? There's nothing new started. Absolutely nothing.
And we...
Other places.
And last month, you know, Mayor, you, now this month, you, you repeated yourself by asking Mr. Higgins questions about East and West... asking Mr. Higgins questions about East and West Slovakia and Third Street. The last month, I've made it very clear, and the council understood it very clearly, that Pullen Street was the number-one street project right now, and that once we finished Pullen Street, we would see what money was left for East, West Slovakia, Third Street, and all those, and if there was any money, we would start those, and if not, we would put those in the budget for next year, and we would take care of it next year. And that was made very clear, but yet it came up again to not. And I'm kinda concerned, because, you know, these, these individuals out there doing everything they know to do to take care of our city. And, you know, I, I'm sure you understand, because you've been around as long as you have, and you've been in construction as long as you have, so I'm sure you understand that if you're on Project A, and your job is water and sewer, if you have a six-inch line break, you have to stop Project A immediately and go take care of your line break and fix that first. And sometimes, when you're fixing repairs and you're doing emergency breaks, that eats up money that you may have allocated for normal, everyday upkeep. And, and I know you know this, be, because you've been in construction before, and you've done this. And, um, so, you know, this is kinda the way things are flowing. The fact that we have made a, uh, an alleged profit, if you will, so far of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, doesn't mean we're owing money. It just means we're watching what we're doing. You know, i- if, if our revenues were higher, maybe the expenditures would be higher. You know, I give kudos to every person in the city who works for the City of Kennedy who's watching the expenses. That's a hard thing to do in the municipalities, to watch your expenses. But I know you know that. And, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm preaching to the choir on that one. So, you know, the reality to it is, Mayor, you, you know, we just, we're plugging away. At some point in time, the tide's gonna turn, and the expenditures are gonna start to catch up with the revenues. That's the way it always is in a municipality. You know, you get in the back half. So, you know, we're doing stuff. It's just, you know, we're, we're, we're reprioritizing as we go with the issue, which is what we need to do. Any other questions about the financials? Thank you.
Item number seven, consent agenda. Any movement?
Make a motion to approve. Item number seven, the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'll second.
If there's no other discussion, call the roll.
Counselor Bionis?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Kono?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty-dash-zero-nine, and ordinance amending ordinance twelve-nineteen-zero-six, modifying the maximum amount allowed to spend by the city manager from ten thousand to fifty thousand. Any movement? I'll make a motion to discuss item.
Go ahead, Brandon.
I'll make a motion to discuss item eight. Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Discussion.
We've had, we went back, we went over this over and over, and said we needed to do it. Now, we're, I, I think we're at the point where we're ready to do it.
I agree, Leslie. It's the only way to make the city continue moving forward with having wreckage as impossible. So, we're gonna continue moving forward with Kennedy and progressing. Every little thing that costs ten thousand dollars doesn't need to come to the city, it can be signed off and ready to go by the city manager.
That's part of our duty, is to see those three.
I would still like to see it. I, yes, we're gonna, we may increase this, but I still wanna see it. I still wanna know.
We'll know, we just, he'll, uh, Mr., Mr. Lynn. Go ahead, go ahead, Leslie.
Us knowing doesn't change. He still will inform us and let us know.
Exactly.
Happening.
That's what I'm saying. I still wanna know.
We just, yeah, we just don't have to have, we just, we just don't have to have to approve.
I understand that. All I'm saying is that at our meeting, when he does his financials, I would like to see that in there. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Hey, hey, let me ask you guys, does, does any of you know what any of those emergency repairs cost? Did you find out afterwards?
I do not. What do they cost?
I don't know either. That, that's my point. The city council's responsibility is to know what happened.
I can go, I can go back and look at the email. There's an email that he sent out to all of us, telling what happened and what was, what was being done, and what the cost was.
Yep.
Let, let me go back and see.
Mr. Lynn, where did this emergency take place at? Can you please refresh us?
I'm sorry?
Where did this emergency happen at? Can you please refresh us? Let us know where exactly it happened at?
Well, we have, the, the, as Mr. Higgins said, I'm not real good with the streets, but it's out, uh, out there near the, um, uh, Elliott Electric and all that. What's that?
What about the one over there by Elm Street and all that area?
And then there was, yes, and then there's the one up there by, um, Elm Street that comes down and, uh, stops just short of Mayor Sutton's children's property, and that was a sewer one. That was manholes. Um, and that one's not completed just yet, so that one's still in progress, as is the other. So, you know, we, we had these things come up. Happens in the city whenever the infrastructure's been ignored for twenty years. And that's what's happened. The infrastructure in this town has been ignored for twenty years, at least. And Counselor Tano?
I don't have a, I don't, I don't have an issue with, you know, when we do these, just shoot you guys an email and let you know. I mean, I've been, at least, I think I've been pretty good about sending you guys emails.
I was looking at it right now. I was going back, but, oh, give me a second.
I thought we'd already discussed that, that you would, that you would let us know.
We did. You mentioned.
This is Adolfo, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I would, uh, uh, make a distinction, or if there is one, with regard to change orders. If the, if the council is going to change their position on change orders, because it's, it could be, uh, if it's under fifty thousand, uh, conceivably, the city manager can approve those without going to council. So, uh, just wanna let you all know that that is one of the, uh, effects of this resolution. But if you want to still review the change orders, uh, regardless of what amounts they are, then, uh, you need to make that distinction, uh, with regard, or keep that in mind with regard to this resolution.
Emergency, yes, sir.
We're not on a resolution, so, we're doing that, we're doing the order.
I'm sorry, I, I meant, I'm sorry, I, I meant the ordinance. I'm sorry. The ordinance.
Um, the emergency, I got that email, the emergency, uh, cost was thirty-four thousand four ninety-five. I'm looking at it right here. Emergency sewer line and manhole replacement and easement between Elm and Maple. Thirty-four thousand four ninety-five.
So, so he made us aware of it, and did what we wanted done, but I can tell by the way everybody's responding, most of you hadn't looked at it. So, I mean, I don't know.
I saw it. I saw it.
So, we knew.
This is something we talked about in the interview process, correct? Yes, sir. I thought it was something we had asked.
Yeah.
So, let me give you a scenario. Let's say that Mr. Lynn decides he wants to go down and do, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars worth of extensions for anyone he chooses. He doesn't have to let you know until after he's done it, right? So, you have no, you have no obligation to the public, no obligation to TECQ, nothing. You're just, you're aware of it afterwards. You shouldn't be able to know what's going on. You shouldn't be able to make sure that, hey, we're spending fifty grand on this, have we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. We should just say, okay, thanks for letting us know you spent fifty grand.
And a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. It's not explaining what's going on. He'll give us a break. Like you just did.
Ten thousand dollars is a lot of money, but fifty thousand is a lot more. It's not my check.
Yes. But in that emergency email, we broke it down on what everything was being done. So, if he's gonna spend forty-eight thousand or forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars right at fifty, he's gonna send us an email and break it down. Give us a better understanding of what just happened. If we have any questions, the door is always open for us to give him a card, go give him a visit.
So, where is the certificate? So, I didn't even receive a certificate like your ordinance calls for. And there's a reason that it calls for that.
So, what's the difference between a certificate and what he sent? Educated.
I mean, an itemized list saying why that was an emergency.
Okay, we got that in the email, but what's the difference? What's the difference between a certificate and the email?
You'll have to read your ordinance, Leslie. I just know I didn't receive.
No, I, I want you to tell me. You, you were saying the certificate, so is the certificate gonna say more than what's in the email? Is it gonna say less than what's in the email? Or is it gonna be written a different way?
It's gonna be written a different way, and it's part of the process. It's the way your ordinance is written. It, it's just proof that it was carried out. That's it. I mean, I don't write the rules. I have to follow them.
But this is Adolfo. I, I would encourage that the city council just take a minute or so, just to read ordinance two-zero, zero-nine. Uh, that would, that, that will be the, the binding document. It, it may answer your questions as well.
That ordinance's in our packet, right, Man, Amanda?
Which or, um, ordinance? The twenty-zero-nine? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So, it says that he doesn't have to go out for bidding for anything fifty or lower.
Adolfo, this is what other municipalities is doing now, right?
Uh, that's correct. It, they're just conforming to the state statute. And, uh, you don't have to have competitive bidding under fifty thousand, and the city attorney has a purchasing agent for the city. Uh, he, the city can, will give him that authority, and the city manager doesn't have to just go back to the council to, to request, because he has that fifty thousand or less that, uh, he could obtain, uh, I guess, merchandise, equipment, supplies, uh, contracts, with certain type of contracts, that are under fifty thousand. So, that way, the, the, the city doesn't get bogged down. And, uh, that, a- and that's the purpose of, of the ordinance, and, uh, I think it's, it's a good or, I, I think it's a good ordinance. I talked to, uh, Mr. Lynn about it, that, uh, that's something early on that, uh, that the city should consider, so, um, he could, you know, uh, it'll be less burden on the council if it's, if it's done that way. And, of course, it conforms with the statute.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Everybody understands this, correct? We move forward, we're not looking back. Do we have any questions? Ask now.
There's no questions, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, make the changes to ordinance twenty-dash-oh-nine, ordinance, uh, twelve-nineteen-oh-nine, modifying the maximum amount allowed to be spent by the city manager from ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars, and he will make us aware of any of those situations through email.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Bionis?
Yes.
I can't hear you. One more time?
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Kono?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Kono, could you repeat your motion? Or, not your motion, but your vote?
I understand.
Okay, okay.
Motion passes. Item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution twenty-dash-fourteen, a resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the employment agreement between the City of Kennedy, Texas, and city manager William N. Hey, before I receive a motion on this, Adolfo, have you reviewed this thing?
Uh, yes, I, I reviewed it, and I, uh, sent, uh, I sent alternate language that Mr. Lynn incorporated most of it. He had some revisions, and I commented on those revisions and sent them to the council yesterday. And, uh, my, and, and sent Mr. Lynn a copy as well. So, uh, my comments are off to the side, uh, with regard to the reasons why the city attorney language should stay in place, or, uh, providing alternate, uh, recommended language. Uh, so, uh, those are, you should see those comments on the side with my name, and, and, uh, to see if the council had any questions, uh, for me, or get clarifications from Mr. Lynn.
City council, have you saw, have you looked at those?
I've looked at everything except what came yesterday. I know we had another one that came yesterday.
Do you have access to it?
Uh, yeah, it's on my page.
Okay, on the side, on the right-hand side, there's some little, uh, little boxes. If you click on those boxes, there's some, um, some comments from the city attorney I just wanna make sure everybody has had the opportunity to look at that, they understand what they're doing with this.
Hey, I have mine open, but I don't see the boxes.
I don't see any boxes either. I saw them literally, I still haven't seen the boxes.
So, so nobody sees the boxes on the right-hand side?
No.
No.
No, you just see ver, modification and stuff on here that he sent us.
Adolfo, is there any way for you to send that to them immediately? Hello? Adolfo? Amanda, is Adolfo still available?
Yes, sir, he shows he's still online.
I'm here, I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
I have it open if- if Council needs me to resend it to them.
Can you see the boxes, Amanda?
Yes, sir, I can.
Would you resend that to them, please?
I- I'm resending it to everyone right now.
Thank you so much.
I've just rescinded it to the manager, it's to, um, you mayor, and to all the council.
Thank you. Would you guys confirm that you received it?
I just received it.
I got mine.
Yes. Does anyone- does anyone not see the boxes on the right side?
I don't see any boxes. I don't see any boxes on this one either. What I just got was a public comment.
Yeah, it's in there again, but no boxes.
I think it just says public comment, but it is the, uh, the addendum B, but I don't see any boxes.
No boxes again.
Are there also any who read them to the left-hand side? Okay, I could- yes, I could do that.
Okay, wait, uh, Mayor, hold on. Um, counsel, if you- if you go to the top of your- if you open that document and you go to the top toolbar up top, you click on the word review, it'll pull up where it has the comment boxes. If you click on the box that says show comments, it should populate the comments the attorney put in there. That's not an option on our screen. It's not an option. You all have iPads, correct?
Yeah.
But that's not an option on this thing. That's probably why. It's a Word document. If you don't have Word on your iPad, you're not gonna be able to see it. So, okay, I just tried to help. Sorry.
Uh, um, Amanda, can you give cha- uh, turn it to a PDF and then send it that way?
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be probably the best way.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, what we could do is skip to item number ten and then, uh, or just wait. It's y'all's preference.
I am seeing it now.
Okay.
Now I see boxes.
Now I see boxes.
Good thinking, Adolfo.
Do you guys wanna take a few minutes and read them?
Yes, please.
Still, I'm gonna receive mine.
Brandon has not received his, Amanda.
There it is, just popped up. Okay.
Justin, Cindy, did you guys receive them?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, but are the boxes available?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Thank you.
When I looked at this thing at the beginning, um, kinda when it was going back and forth between the city manager and the attorney, there's some of the things that I noticed right away was that we were taking the city attorney out, um, to look at things. I- I feel it's so important that the city attorney knows what's going on to kinda keep us safe. So, I really would like that language and some of these comments that we bullet say that, that the city attorney needs to stay on there, um, to make sure that we're simply taken care of.
So, you'd like for it to read the way the attorney wanted to read, is what you're saying?
That's correct. I want where it does have, um, that we- that he does make contact with the city attorney and makes him aware of the things that are happening.
Lynn, I don't have a problem with that either. I think, you know, I think that's just prudent to- to be able- for him to have somebody to talk to to make sure that we are- we've dotted all the Is and crossed all the Ts. One set of Is is good, but two sets are better.
That's right. I really don't wanna take the city attorney out of the equation.
So, if we go with the recommended changes that the city attorney has put in, that doesn't take him out of the equation?
That's correct.
You there, Mr. Lynn?
I am.
The city attorney was never going to be taken out of the co- equation, correct? You were always going to conduct, have the city attorney look over some stuff prior to bringing stuff to us for decisions, correct?
Always. Case in point, the email I sent you guys about Hartland today. There is nothing in writing that says I had to include the city attorney in that, but Adolfo can testify as you guys can. Right there in bold yellow, I specified to Adolfo to get with me this week to talk about it. And I'm not bound by any contract or anything to do that. So, I'm alre- I already do that.
Well, that's good. I'm glad that you do, but I would like the words to be in there.
Now, just keep in mind, just- just keep in mind, counsel, that when you force the city manager to always go to the city attorney, you're doing- you're agreeing to something, and what you're agreeing to is an escalated city attorney bill. Every time I need to do something, once we put that in writing, I'm gonna be bound by to do it. So, if it says that I have to call the city attorney, I'm gonna call the city attorney. And so, when the city attorney bills go up exponentially because I'm on the phone ten, fifteen hours a week to the city attorney, you all need to be aware to pay- be ready to pay those bills. So, I'm just saying.
I think this is all in references. Contracts, uh, and, uh, and that's the- that was the, um, you know, interpretation of contracts and, uh, you know, contract breaches or- or enforcement, uh, and- and certain personnel policies, 'cause the law changes, uh, federal law and sometimes state law on employment and personnel matters. And with contracts, there is, uh, other things to consider, uh, uh, as a litigator, I- I prepare contracts, right? And I review contracts, uh, with that in mind to keep the client, uh, aware of what's gonna go on. And it's, uh, you know, always better to review those type of things. But, um, if it's, you know, a- a- and that's the scope of it with regard to the- the, uh, personnel policies and- which is already the new personnel policies are getting reviewed by the city at- city attorney from our office. But it's always ha- good to have that language in there. Uh, and again, it's not global, city attorney looking at everything. We- we don't want to, and we don't wanna charge our client that expense. But certain things, uh, with regard to, um, uh, employment law matters, we get those questions all the time from our other city clients. And especially contract in- interpretation, uh, if the, you know, if there is a, um, issue regarding a breach or not breached, then those are the matters that the attorney at- city attorney, um, is supposed to look at and is supposed to, uh, make that determination. And, uh, uh, but it very well, the city manager and the city attorney may be on the same page. Sometimes it may- may not be. So, I believe it's important to keep that city attorney language in there.
So, after all, everything you've looked at and the comments you've made, with the comments that you've made now on the things that we should keep and add in there, you're confident in this, uh, in this? Is that correct? With what you've looked at and what you, you know, the language and looked at the law, you're confident with what the bullets that you've made that needs to be in there? Is that right?
That is correct.
Hey, hey, here's an idea. Or we could not amend the agreement at all.
What's the idea?
We could not agree, uh, uh, amend the agreement.
Oh.
Doesn't have to be amended.
I- I- I reckon.
That was gonna be my next question. What was the whole purpose of amending something that was already working? I- I just- I had- I wanted to ask that question too.
Not- that's the problem. It's not working.
No. It worked for ten other city managers. All of a sudden, it's not working. Well, we have to.
Let's see, we- we are- we- we- we are- we are now still trying to stick stuffs that ten other city managers didn't get done. And we're- we're working forward and- and- and getting there, but we still have some issues. And I, you know, I understand that some- that we are uncomfortable giving a leader, give- giving someone the power to do the job we hired them to do. But I don't know how, you know, we- we've had three meetings that we- that we couldn't get enough council people to get on the telephone for or to show up so we could have the meeting to deal with whatever we had to deal with. That's what I've counted so far. And I understand the reservation, but if you're gonna have the city attorney review it and he's gonna keep us in the loop, I- I- I don't know.
I- I agree with that, Leslie. I know that we- we- we have problems. We do. I can agree with that. We- we're not perfect. Things aren't perfect right now. But my thing is that I want to be a hundred percent sure with the attorney looking at this and what he said on the side and the things that he re- recommends being in there, that it's in there. I wanna keep the city safe too. I- I want the best for the city.
I'm- I'm- I'm all for doing that.
Yeah.
I- I think that's true, yeah. But for us to- for us to consider not doing it at all, I- I don't understand that.
I just wanna make sure that our attorney's, uh, more with what he's done, with what he's changed. Um, you know, I don't know how Mr. Lynn feels about those changes his attorney has done and what his language is in there. Like I said, I'm- I will do this as long as we go with what the attorney has suggested. Otherwise, I will not, because I think it is so important that the attorney is comfortable with what he sees, because he's the one that's gonna keep us safe one hundred percent.
The attorney works for the city, for the city council. Adolfo, have you drawn up- have you drawn up your own, um, your own amendment?
I- I- I changed what, uh, Mr. Lynn, uh, prepared because it kinda make it just easier to- to read. And- and I did change the language, and he did agree to most of those changes. Just some of the- the other three or four changes, I- I don't agree with. And I'd rather have the city attorney make those recommendations.
Right, but this is no different than any other employee of the city making an agreement with the city, and you represent the city.
Yeah, the- the, uh, yes, for the city's best interest, that is correct. I did change the resolution, and, uh, I did change the addendum. I called it addendum B, and it's actually the second amendment to the contracts. So, I had to, uh, change it around that way. But the recommended language should stay in with regard to the, uh, you know, the city- the city manager only has the authority that's provided. You can't go with the authority that's provided by statute or what our ordinance to say or what our personal policy say, except those exceptions that are listed in his original contract. Uh, and, uh, those are, uh, and he does have, um, the latitude as city manager with regard to his duties that are in his original contract and that attachment, I think, appendix A, that- that clarifies what he can do. And in this one, uh, I think it's, uh, it- it clarifies it further and especially so both sides understand that, uh, the ci- the city attorney will have some involvement with regard to, uh, personnel matters out of contracts. And that's- that's, uh, those are the primary ones. And then that the city manager's authority, uh, is not beyond what ordinances or what the state statute provides. And those are the- those- and those are the ones that- those things are the ones I concentrate on. The other ones are- are fine. Uh, I- I made the small changes. Uh, number seven, I left blank, so the council can make that determination themselves. And, um, but, yeah, I- I, um, when it comes to the- the scope, uh, limitations to the scope or cannot exceed the statute, uh, and city attorney involvement in personnel and contracts, yeah, that's important to stay in there.
Okay, Adolfo, you understand that we depend on you. If this, if something, any agreement was to go south, who are we calling? We're calling the attorney, the city attorney. So, if you're saying go, we're going. If you say we're not going, then we're not going. I mean, we depend on.
I think, I think it's. I think the.
What'd you say, Adolfo?
Oh, uh, hold on. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay, yeah. The addendum B is, uh, does things in clarifications. And so there won't be any misunderstanding. I don't think, uh, Mr. Lynn wants any misunderstandings either. And so I think this, you know, clarifies it a little further. Uh, and with the, the city attorney's, you know, suggested language, I think the, the, uh, I think, I think it's fine, the way it reads. With, with my changes, with my changes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. So once you get this, you'll get us a good one with, with your language in there so we can see it, uh, clear. Not with all the highlighting and all the other stuff y'all have done to it now, but it'll, it'll be very clear, um, to us once, um, we approve this or if we approve this. Is that right?
That is correct. I'll, I'll make a clean copy and distribute it to everybody. And then, uh, um, yeah, so you, you can look at it without the, the comment boxes or, uh, you know, the deletions.
And if we make a motion tonight, the motion needs to include with all attorney changes.
That is correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
It's still a hundred percent.
Adolfo, okay. So, every time I call you, if, every time the city manager is gonna call you, there's gonna be a charge. Uh, some understanding. A few months ago, we had interim city managers, we had a discussion about this, and the attorney bills were just outrageous. So, there was some advi- you advised us on why the fees were the way they are, the way stuff was, what's being discussed and so forth. So, we go back to trying to keep the attorney's top down, but this is just automatically turning around and making the bill go right back up after we took advice from, uh, I think it was the mayor or somebody on the council. We have to go back to that meeting earlier in the year and, and whatnot. But is there any way, since you're gonna have so much communication with the city manager, you can give us a set rate? So the bill doesn't exceed a certain amount, since we're gonna be going through so much more?
Well, Mr. Lynn is quite a capable city manager. He has, the more experience the city manager has, the less that he has to rely upon the city attorney. So, uh, uh, because of Mr. Lynn's experience, that, that's gonna be a given. Uh, the, uh, the only time he would.
But you want, but.
Yeah.
But to the understanding right now, everything goes through you, so you can review it. So, what's the difference between you putting these boxes on here versus what he's already been doing? He goes to you already.
The whole purpose, the whole purpose was, was this, was for clarity. So if we're going to have clarity and if we want the attorney involved, we should have the boxes, should have the attorney, the attorney's wording in the agreement so that we know all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. But there is not, that's just in the personnel situation and the contract situations. It doesn't say in some of these other situations that he has to contact the attorney. He can console with the, with the attorney and get the attorney's advice, which is something he already does. So we should not be really adding a whole lot more to our attorney bill.
Right, it's already written in the text. We're just adjusting clarity, like, like Leslie said.
That is correct. And, and frankly, I think the, the train bills will go down because, uh, Mr. Lynn knows what he's doing.
May I say something, please?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Lynn.
Okay. The, the, the major issue with this last revised copy that I have is the word shall versus the word may. Shall is an emphatic statement that means you must do it, you can't get away from it, there is no exclusion. The word may provides latitude. And that's one word that does need to be changed from shall to may. It doesn't take the attorney out of the equation. The other issue is that Mr. Ruiz and I worked very diligently in the beginning on the original contract. And in that contract, I wanted some language and I wrote the language. When I submitted it to Mr. Ruiz, he made some refining to that language that best suited the letter and spirit of the law that he liked better. And I went with that. I, I agreed to that. And that language was located in section twenty, paragraph H. And that language makes the contract the controlling document. In this particular, uh, amendment, we need to keep that language consistent. What you're dealing with, with a contract is not a law. You're dealing with a civil document. So, if, if this ever came up, as the mayor says, it went south, this would be a civil suit. So the civil courts want to see consistency between the original document and any additions to that document. So all I'm trying to do in this one is get consistency between the amendment and the original document that pushes it back to section H. If we can keep my change to section H, uh, in that paragraph, which is the first paragraph, and change the word from shall to may, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna enlist the help of my city attorney.
I would not.
Always. Because, you know, I'm not gonna do anything that I'm gonna go out there and have to go to my city attorney three months from now and say, hey, here's a mess, dig me out. I just don't do that.
The, the, it's, the difference, it, uh, the contract is obligation between both parties. May is permissive. The, uh, if you leave the permissive language in there, uh, the city manager can, may not contact the city attorney at all for anything. Shall makes the city attorney part of the equation. The, the reference, he's making to his original contract, that only involves, uh, conflicts in personnel policies that were addressed in the first. It doesn't involve contractual items or, uh, items regarding, uh, the creation of personnel policies or, or, uh, so it's, those are in the purview of the city attorney. Uh, and it, it should be kept shall instead of may.
Well, Mr. Ruiz, the, the problem I'm talking about isn't even in the, the bullet points. It's not even in what's clarifying. It's in that first paragraph and it says, and I quote, "If a conflict arises between the terms and or obligations of this addendum and the provisions of the statute's ordinance and policy," the provision, and then it should say set forth in section twenty, paragraph H, in the city manager's agreement control, because that language right there needs to be consistent. That has nothing to do with what we're clarifying my duties are. That is a controlling statement as to what document controls. And that section twenty H that's in the original contract says that if there's a conflict between anything, the contract controls. And therefore, this addendum must be in line with that. Otherwise, it's not, it's not gonna be uniformity in the document. And that is the only major thing that I care about.
It's, it's in line perfectly because it says the paragraph, paragraph H in the city manager's agreements, which indicates if there's a, if there is a conflict with the personnel policies and the city manager's agreements, the city manager's agreements, uh, is, uh, adults, I go to superior to that. So, it, because there are so.
And that's language.
It recognizes that.
Yes, but that's language you wrote. You wrote that language, because I had something totally different in the contract and you wrote that language. All I'm wanting to do in this particular paragraph is make the language consistent. In other words, the addendum is part of the contract. It's not a separate standalone document. This is not a new contract. In addition to the contract, therefore, it is governed by the contract and section twenty applies to this. And to take it out is to render this portion of the document not part of the contract, even if it's adopted. I can, I can go with everything my counselors are saying. I can say, you know what? Everything they're talking about is items one through ten. I'm not even talking about items one through ten. I'm talking about this paragraph up here that refers back, it's, it's a referring statement that refers back to a clause in a contract. It joins, it joins the addendum to the contract. That's what it does. And that language must stay in order to keep uniformity between the addendum and the contract. And any judge in a civil suit will tell you that.
Now, this is.
Adolfo.
Between contract interpretation, uh, the, the, the paragraph does provide for that, uh, it, uh, uh, section H, section twenty, it does provide that. And the, the, the interpretation of that agreement is, is recognized. So that's the difference between an attorney interpreting an agreement and, and someone who, 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 uh, is not an attorney. And also, I taught contracts as well. So, it's the, uh, the provisions and the intent of the parties are what, are what, uh, uh, controls. And so especially if it was, if, if we're talking about an ordinance, okay, that, that's fine. A contract gets a little more personal. There's, there's liability on, on both sides. So, the, uh, the clearer it is, the better. And with regard to the, uh, that section, uh, it acknowledges the existence of section twenty in the city manager's agreement and acknowledges that there are some exceptions to the personnel policy that are listed in the agreement. So, those, you know, do not apply. So that's, it's, it's in the place where it needs to be and it doesn't, there's no, uh, with regard to conformity, that section eight is just on personnel policy, that's it. It's not involved contracts, uh, it doesn't involve the creation of, uh, uh, personnel policy. It involves the interpretation of what the policies are as to the city manager. So the, the difference, uh, they're talking apples and oranges in a sense. But, uh, the language here protects, actually protects both parties.
Actually, it doesn't protect me, because I shopped this with three employment law lawyers within the state of Texas and two outside the state of Texas, one practices at the federal level. Every single one of them told me I needed that in there. Every single one of them said I needed that referring clause in there. So we have a city, we have a ci- we have a city attorney interpreting it one way, and I have other lawyers that interpret it another way. And that's the point in all of this. Not one single attorney ever interprets things identically. The law is so ambiguous to begin with. That is why we have judges. And so what I'm saying is, because I've already had this whole document reviewed by an attorney, I put in the changes that was recommended to me by an attorney. And really, all I, even all I care about is this thing.
Mr. Lynn?
The.
I, I wanna know why you went to another attorney when we have an attorney. And I.
Uh, I'm allowed to have my own personal attorney, am I not?
You are, but I'm asking why. This is a city document.
Actually, it's a civil document between me and the city. I have a right to have it independently reviewed.
And hey, guys, if I.
I had my contract.
If I can interrupt, I wouldn't have changed anything. I would not amend his agreement at all after hearing this conversation.
I'm having a hard time too now because it, it seems like we're not on the same page. Our attorney and Mr. Lynn are not on the same page with this, so I'm not ready to change it until they are. And right now, we're not.
Uh, I'm on the same page with items one through ten. That's not my problem.
The, the whole thing, not just item one through ten, I'm talking about the whole document. If you guys are not in agreement with this whole document and with everything y'all have done, then y'all need to go back to the drawing board and look at this again and come to agreement. Cause if you're not, then there's no point in this changing this until y'all are.
Adolfo.
Yes, sir.
How many years do you have experience in contracts?
Doesn't matter.
Uh, I've, I've been practicing thirty-three years. Uh, majority of that was in municipalities and, uh, drafting contracts and teaching contracts. It's, 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 uh, you know, that's, that's my experience. Now, now, it's, it's with regard to, now, this is an employment agreement. The, the attorneys that have been consulted by Mr. Lynn are looking after his best interests. I'm looking after the city's best interests. That happens to me all the time. Mr. Lynn isn't proud to have anything involving, uh, a contractual arrangement reviewed by an attorney. He has, uh, he can do it. The, and with regard to, when I, um, do contracts representing the city, uh, it's, I, uh, it's usually takes a different, uh, drafting style. But with regard to the, that section twenty, again, all it is is personnel policies. And you can't have a, a contract trump a city ordinance or a ci- or a state statute with regard to duties and obligations given to the city manager by the city council.
I understand. Adolfo, a lot of your conversation earlier, you kept bringing up that word control, control, control. What, what, what are you trying to get at, at control? If we don't pass this, is it, what is this, a control situation? Because if.
I don't know. I don't.
When we did interviews and we hired this man, he is a, he is the one that's in control of the city. He's the one that, he's the one that he gave the rank to and take the city over. We're not trying to take control away from him.
That, that, yeah, it's, yeah, this is to, to clarify.
When we hired him and you made the contract, you, you did this, why didn't you see this from the get-go? Why are we now trying to take this control away from our city manager? When we hired him to do a specific job, and that is to run the city of Kennedy.
But we're not taking everything away from the city manager at all.
My next question would be, why did we have to clarify? What was the reason for having to come back and clarify? That's for the city manager. He's so long been wanted for. Well, let him answer.
Mr. Lynn, if you don't mind, what, what has brought us to this point?
Do you all really want me to answer this question?
Yeah, I think they need to hear it.
I mean, I'm being really honest when I ask this with you guys. Do you really want me to answer this question and be honest when I answer it?
I think we all know the answer. We start from the get-go, honestly.
Okay, I'll answer. The reason we needed clarification, the reason why this whole document even exists is because the mayor is impeding my ability to perform my duties as outlined in my current contract to city manager. He is continually going behind my back with city personnel, with vendors, with construction workers, and doing everything he can to sabotage my success and this city's progression as it is. This is why it has to be completely clarified, so the mayor himself and all his little buddies will understand that the city council has hired a city manager who is in charge of the city. That's the short answer.
Thank you.
Just remember, while I ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'll agree to this amendment as long as we use the attorney's language.
As long as we use the attorney's language, it doesn't take control away from our city manager. And everybody is under the understanding that the city manager runs the city of Kennedy.
As long as we use the attorney's language that's on the right, on the right-hand side, as long as we use the language the way he suggests, because that's what he believes that's the best thing for the city, then I'm okay with it, but it has to have that language.
Okay, yes, I understand, but if it was best thing for the city, why didn't it happen from the get-go? Why is there having to be a control issue now?
I'm not understanding the first control issue. I, I don't, he's the one that brought this up that it needed to be changed. So, okay, we're gonna change it, but it needs to be correct. It has to be in the correct language. That's all I'm saying. I don't know about this control issue that y'all are having. All I'm saying is that the language needs to be the way the attorney suggests because he's the attorney and he knows. If we can do it with the way the attorney says, I'm okay with it. But if we're gonna keep going back and forth and they can't agree, then they need to go back to the drawing board, sit down and discuss it again and get the verbiage right, and then come back to us and then we can vote on it. All I'm saying is it needs to be the way the attorney wrote it. That's it.
Counsel? Let me say this. Mr. Ruiz, you know, I'm, I, this, this particular document should have been one and done to begin with after you and I did it. We've gone on too long on this tonight, okay? Here's my take on this. If Counselor Tano is on board, but she wants to see particular language with it, then I'll tell you what. I'll give in and I'll say, just rewrite the document with your language in it and let's get this done so we can get on with the rest of the business tonight, please. We have, we have other business we gotta take care of tonight and I'd just like to move on.
I'm good with that.
You wanna move on? Okay, that's make a motion to approve Resolution twenty fourteen, amending city manager employee agreement that was set by the city secretary in our council packet.
With the attorney revisions?
With, with the city attorney, continue to have contact with our city manager. Cause the city manager, the city attorney said that he doesn't have to have everything go into him. So they can continue communicating.
Well, this, that's what I'm saying. The agreement doesn't require for everything. That's why- if we just-
I think you could just have the revision.
Yeah, we need to stay with the revisions because the revisions doesn't say everything that come up, he's gotta contact the ci- the city manager.
Uh, with attorney revisions?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
I got disconnected. Uh, I need to go, y'all need to go back.
Okay, what was your motion, Brandon? What was the motion?
Y'all still there? I don't, y'all, y'all still there?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
I got disconnected, so I didn't hear what the motion was. So y'all need to back up a little bit, about two minutes and tell me exactly what just happened cause I didn't hear a motion.
What was the motion?
He's repeating the motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty fourteen, amending city manager employee agreement that was set by the city secretary in our city council packet with attorney revisions.
All the attorney revisions?
And I second that.
And that's the all of my attorney's- Okay, I want to make sure. I'm sorry, guys, I got disconnected.
It's okay.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Fong?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number ten, consideration of possible action in regard to creating an engineering department and hiring a full-time staff engineer. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss item number ten?
Second?
I'll second.
I'll, uh,
discussion.
Okay, uh, last month at the, uh, meeting, we addressed this. Several counselors, uh, wanted to see something more refined. So in your packet is a more refined set of numbers there. Um, have you all seen, seen it?
Yes.
Engine, technician salary ranges?
Yes.
Right, the top part, the top part of the document is, um, is the salary ranges for mechanical engineer, uh, a mechanical engineering technician, a civil engineer, civil engineering technician, broken down over where we are, the coastal plains region, and then comparative to Texas and the United States, showing you the, the various, um, average salaries for each one of those. The bottom portion is, is what you all were more interested in. Um, it, we, I broke it down into each one, potential salaries for each one. Uh, then you have the retirement, uh, for TMRS, uh, and that portion is the city's portion. Um, and then you have the city's portion of the tax liability on each of those salaries as well. Uh, then over underneath that, you have the worker's comp, uh, calculation. That's how much worker's comp we would have to, uh, pay based upon those salaries. Uh, I figured the department would need two vehicles, two trucks. Average cost of a truck about sixty-five thousand. So you're looking about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for two trucks. And then miscellaneous training and equipment. There's engineers have some very specific equipment that they need and, uh, four people with training. So I just kinda just, uh, rounded, rounded it up to six hundred thousand for a total departmental look for everything at a cost on an annual basis. So that's an annual number.
All right.
Now, we can compare that to one year of our current engineering firm and the savings based upon the numbers from last month. For one year, uh, the savings would be about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And with the team of engineer, with the team of those four engineers, we can do about ninety-five percent of everything in the city without sourcing out.
Anybody have any questions? How soon are we going to be able to get these engineers in as, if we pass this? Would this be in a budget for the twenty twenty-one?
Do them? Yes. Yes, sir. We would, we would actually begin the budget for twenty twenty-one. Um, what we're doing is we're creating a department and then we're gonna go out and start looking for them. Uh, it's gonna take some time to get the engineers in because that's a very highly specialized field. And it's gonna take time for us to go to recruit, uh, to get them in. So we're gonna wanna have the department created, but we're gonna wanna start the recruiting, uh, within the next sixty days so that we can get them in here and get them up to speed with everything that's going on in the city by the time they get here.
I think we should fill those positions that we have right now that we need the parks director. I think all those positions need to be filled and all the other things that we need to parse before we even consider this. I, I still am not confident in hiring them right now at this time.
Um, if I may, um, as I sit here as the city manager, my job is to prioritize the needs of the city and to bring that to council. I will tell you right now, I would rather have a city engineer than a parks director. I can operate that complex without a parks director. I cannot operate my infrastructure without an engineer.
All right, and, and we're talking about, we're talking about, uh, savings. Somebody's phone is acting up, guys. We're, we're talking about a savings of over seven hundred thousand dollars annually, uh, where we could still keep doing the things we're doing. You know, getting the park director and, and getting all this other stuff. That doesn't, we're not taking away from the budget. We're actually putting money back in the hopper so we can actually do more.
Um, I have a question. So their, uh, licenses and things like that, are we going to have to pay for them to get relicensed every year? Or does that mean they keep all the time? What about, uh, equipment? What about an office? Those are some other things that I, I kinda wanted to ask you, Mr. Lynn. Answer those questions.
Oh, yes, most definitely. Well, the wonderful thing about it is, is we have lots of office space. Uh, we have office space down at the water department. I just learned we own a building that's not being used that has offices in it. Uh, so we actually have plenty of space to house the engineering. Um, that's not a problem. As far as the, uh, professional certifications go, it's just like having a city manager. I have professional certifications that the city picks up. Um, so, you know, you do the same thing whenever they do, whenever they have to sit to redo their, their PE, the professional engineer and that, you know, you, you, you pick that up as part of their benefits package. Um-
How much does that, something like that cost? Do you know just the ballpark?
I know, and I went off the top of my head. It's something I could find out though relatively quick.
But in that, in that budget, he has training and equipment. There's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in there for training and equipment.
I, I-
That's in the six hundred thousand.
I, I saw that Leslie. I was just wondering, no kidding, what the amount was per, uh, you know, per, cause we're looking at what? Hiring two people or a staff of people? I was just wanting to know what the cost per person is, if we have to carry their license or, you know, what we have to do to keep their license? Are we gonna have to insure them like, you know? I'm just asking the questions so they don't come up later like a surprise. I just wanna know we're making sure, we're asking all the right questions, getting all the information before we make a decision. This is a big decision. I just, all I'm saying, I just want all the information.
Right, no, you, you, you know, your kind, your questions are very good. Now, what we, you know, that's why that number is a hundred and ninety-five, to, to incorporate all those costs that are unforeseen right now on, on, on basic things that would go along with having an engineering staff. Um, you know, the, the biggest expense they're gonna probably have equipment-wise is gonna be a blueprint machine and, uh, being able to do blueprints, uh, getting AutoCAD on their computers, that, that's, that's only like about forty-five hundred dollars. You know, they have spec- they have specialized tables, which those tables run, you know, uh, five, six hundred dollars each and you would only need two tables. You know, I mean, it's, uh, the costs are there and, and there's a lot actually padded into that right now. Just to, just to give you guys an idea, that's what I was asked to do, was just to give you an idea. Now, you know, the, the retirement, the tax, the worker's comp, those numbers are pretty, uh, accurate based upon the salary numbers. Um, those are, those are, those will be what your costs will be if we pay those salaries. Um, the rest of it, the vehicles, that's, that's a fluid cost. Um, and everything else is kinda fluid. But if you, if, if you really need me to get a number, I can, I can call the sort of, the state of Texas and I can find out how much it costs to take the professional engineering exam and what the requirements are, how many years did they have to go before they have to, you know, um, do certify and that. Uh, so, you know, that's not a problem. Most professional certi- I'm sorry?
They would need their own software too, right?
Well, that's already rolled in there. That would be the AutoCAD.
Okay, I was just curious. Um, and then I have another question. When we decide this or, or if we decide this, are we going to be the ones doing the interviewing for the, uh, for this position since it's something new? Um, I really would like to be involved in the interview process with this.
Uh, like I stated last month, Counselor Tano, uh, I will put together a team of people to interview the engineers and we will go through all the rounds of interviews and we will dwindle it down to a select few that we want to bring on board that we would consider, that we would consider bringing on board. Let me say it to you like that. And then we're gonna take those select few and we're gonna bring them to council. And then council and myself will be the ones that will go through and do the final, final interview on the engineers. Uh, up to the- up to the point of the final, final interview, um, council will be kept abreast of what's going on, but the active participation won't come into that final, final interview.
Hey, does everybody understand you have third engineers at your disposal at what you're paying and the production that you're receiving for that money? This isn't apples to apples. You're not gonna just go get two engineers and two techs and they're gonna come in and tackle what's in front of us. I mean, do we realize?
I think we discussed at the last meeting, if I was correct, that they're not, the ones we have right now aren't going away and that they're going to have to fulfill their duty of what their scope of work is right now due to the fact that they've been paid. So we did, we did, we did, we have to oversee that and make sure that this stuff gets done. Going with this engineer idea, it's not a really bad idea. I mean, we're, you, you brought up a few months ago trying to save money with the city due to the fact that every year our budget continues to climb. Well, we have an option right here in front of us that could put a little Band-Aid on the big bleeding that's in front of us. And now we're kind of iffy and not sure about which direction to go. I think that this is a great idea and it's gonna save, the, what Leslie said and Mr. Lynn were talking about earlier, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's almost three quarters of a million dollars we're spending on fees right now for a firm right that has to get, can you go? We have, as a matter of fact, this engineer, Hanson, has to go back and do some more work down on East Main when it wasn't done the first time. Hopefully, these people won't have to do that.
Okay, fir- first, I'm not iffy about anything. Second, you're not gonna save seven hundred thousand dollars and I'm gonna explain to you why. Are you familiar with the county engineer? Do you know what a county engineer does all day?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor. Explain to us.
They can, they consult with other engineers. That's what they do. So if you're telling me that they're gonna not go away, we wouldn't be saving seven hundred thousand dollars. You're gonna have an increase of six hundred thousand dollars. Right?
No, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna continue to spend that amount of money with those engineer firms when we have our own engineer. We, there is gonna be some time we have to consult with outside engineers. But we're not gonna hire somebody fresh out of college that just learned how to use their CAD system. We're looking for a qualified person, a person that has the knowledge and know-how. Now, you know, you, we can talk about Hanson. Hanson does a good job, but they, they have, they have flopped on some things too. And we still paid them good money and we still paying them. So-
Yes, sir.
To say that we don't have, that we're not smart enough to go out there and find two good engineers and two good apprentices, I, you know, I disagree. And, and it is gonna, the first year, you're right. It's probably gonna cost us a little more money. But after that, the amount of money we spend will decrease every year until we're, we don't have any engineers tied to us other than the ones that are on our payroll and every now and then when we do consulting with other engineers. That's just my thought for what is worth it.
Justice?
And my thought is five hundred plan sheets per project, up to eight hundred plan sheets. How much time does that take people to do? If you're unhappy with somebody's service, I understand that. My problem is this isn't the answer.
It's a step forward, even though it looks like the-
I'm a firm believer, when you say this is not the answer, you probably have got an answer in mind. So what would be your answer?
My answer would be if you're not happy with the- My answer would be, if you're not happy with the services that you're receiving, use another firm. I would hate to see Hanson go, okay?
Why would you hate to see Hanson go? Give me a reason why you would hate to see Hanson go. Why, why do we need to keep a firm here that has been costing my, my constituents down on East Main headaches?
Well, Hanson's also kept the city out of a lot of hot water with T C E Q, have they not?
Well, any engineering firm would, could do that, probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're, 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 what we're saying is there's nobody better than what we have and we're not smart enough to find anybody better. But saving, our goal is to save money for the city, to put money back in the kit for them to do more stuff and-
Right, but this doesn't save you money, you're, you're, you're gonna pay six hundred thousand, but you're gonna get the work of two engineers. That's all you're gonna get. You're talking ten years, ten man-years of labor to do some of these projects with two engineers. I mean, you're, you're talking about five hundred plan sheets for one project. Some of them seven hundred, some of them eight, how long does that take to plot?
How am I so sure that's gonna be five hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred? We don't even have the people, do we have people in mind already who's, who's gonna do it? That have the reputation of doing this over and over again, that do seven hundred, eight hundred plan sheet?
Well, you have problems in the city, are they gonna require five hundred plan sheet, seven hundred, eight hundred plan sheet? So it doesn't matter who it is, you're still gonna have those plan sheets and that takes a lot of time and a lot of money. If you do something like this, it takes thorough research, it doesn't just take a month worth of looking around and guessing and putting a little pad in here, I mean, you need, th- th- this is something that would require a business plan, how is it gonna actually work? Because you're expecting to save seven hundred, but in reality, you're not gonna save seven hundred, you're gonna get less work. Because-
I have a question.
Four people are not gonna do what you're wanting done.
I, I have a question. Mayor, did you put together a business plan whenever you created the Parks and Recreation Department?
I didn't put together the Parks and Recreation Department.
I mean, when I say you, I'm talking, oh, here. Did you put together a business plan whenever y'all did that?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay, okay, so if you didn't put together a business plan for the Parks and Recreation Department, all you're doing is creating an engineering department, you don't need a business plan for that, okay? I mean, you know, these numbers are not haphazard. You may think they're haphazard and there's a lot of talk that's gone on over the last three months about some things. But I'm gonna tell you one thing, okay? When it comes to human resources and doing this kinda stuff, I'm pretty damn good at what I do. And these numbers come off the same site everybody uses, that's anybody in human resources for doing salaries and finding K F As and all that kinda stuff. Employment lawyers go to this site. What I'm trying to tell you is this, I put some thought into this, but here's the thing, Mayor. I've been thinking about this since day one, so it hasn't been an overnight whim. I've been looking at this since I walked out of here that night that you offered me the job. I've been thinking about how to save this city money since before I even set foot in this office with Mr. Shaver. So I have been working for this city before you guys even wrote me a check. This is not haphazard. All we're doing tonight is saying, yes, wanna create an engineering department, or no, we don't wanna create an engineering department. How is that gonna affect the greater scope of things? I'll tell you how it's gonna affect the greater scope of things. Let's talk about Pullen Street, let's talk about Lavaca, let's talk about Third, let's talk about, uh, Blue Street, let's talk about, uh, Fifth Street, let's talk about Pullen Street, let's talk about Freeny Street, let's talk about all these streets in the city of Kennedy. If I have an on-staff engineer who I'm paying a salary to, he works two thousand eighty hours a year is what his salary is based on. He may work more than that, but I guarantee you, he's gonna put in the time to engineer my street. He's gonna put in the time to engineer my infrastructure, he's gonna put in the time to engineer everything and guess what, at the end of the day, I pay him seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars a year. If I use an outside firm, they're gonna do the exact same thing, the difference is, I'm gonna pay them tons of money. I've got a one hundred thousand dollar Hanson invoice on my desk right now, waiting for me to approve it for payment. One hundred and eleven thousand dollars for one month. How do you even justify keeping the city at the front of a brain? Remember, I'm fixing to pay a hundred thousand dollars to Hanson and they didn't do half the work in the time that an engineer of the city would do. And we're not talking about one person, Mayor, we're talking about four and it's the exact same setup Hanson uses. Hanson has an engineer and they have techs and they use their techs and they use their engineers. But guess what, Mayor, they're not the only firm that does that. Southwest Engineers does it, so do every other engineering firm in the nation. We're essentially setting up our own engineering department, exactly identical to every engineering company in the nation. We have engineers and we have techs and we're not just using civil engineers, we're gonna bring in a mechanical engineer. Because guess what, I have mechanical things out at my syrup plant, but a civil engineer doesn't have expertise in, but a mechanical engineer, he's trained in that stuff. And I need infrastructure that my civil engineer is trained in, that my mechanical engineer isn't trained in. I've covered the whole gamut with the exception of electrical and aerospace engineers.
May I say something, Count? May I say something?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I just, I wanna identify how I see both sides of this. Um, Mayor Sutton, as far as what you're saying, as far as, yes, the county does have an engineer, uh, he's a road engineer, we pay him a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and actually, we did the budget today for Roden Bridge with him and as far as outside engineering, we, I think it was like thirty-two or thirty-six thousand dollars we spent year-to-date. Um, but with that being said, um, on the flip side of it, for, you know, two engineers, one mechanical and one civil, and then engineer techs for each one of them, seems rather excessive. I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I would like to reduce the cost in the engineering fees. But I feel like this is, this, this might be the right option, it might be the right option, but I would rather see us taking a step into it, just seeing where we are. Could we just hire a civil engineer and a civil engineering tech and just start with our roads and just see the cost savings from that before taking the full dive? Because we're still gonna have, we, the city has lots of great plans to do lots of large projects that these engineers, honestly, I think I would like to see an outside engineering firm who specializes in, in, in a civic center or specializes in a sports complex or specializes in all these niche things that have a huge team of engineers to do those large projects. Maybe, maybe the answer to this, to me in the middle for everybody is let's start with an engineer that just focuses on roadways and streetworks. Still have an outside engineer focus on our T C E Q problems, but just, just see what that does. Let's possibly budget for it, do the civil engineer to do the streetways and everywhere else. Look at that next year and say, oh, well, look, we saved X amount of dollars this year by not having to hire a civil engineer. This has worked out good, then go into the next following year, if everybody's happy, and then add on the mechanical engineering side.
Justin.
Councilor, you're right. And tonight's objective really isn't even to hire the engineer, it's just to create the department. What I gave you all-
That's what I was gonna say, we're not talking about the, the-
I, I get that, the reason though is creating the department though to budget in a fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. So I guess I'm just trying to like, if, if, if we do decide to create those departments, maybe instead of doing a full pledge, um, not full pledge, but having a vast engineering staff, maybe let's just, let's, 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 let's tiptoe into the water and let's see what, if we just hired a civil engineer and a civil engineering tech, if the department is created, um, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, maybe that's the angle we should go just to see the reservations, you, you know, everybody has reservations, uh, and, 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 and some people are very pro it. Maybe that's how we meet in the middle to see if we're really gonna save money or not and how much outside engineering in the civil side we save, that's it.
Oh, I agree, Councilor.
And I, I agree with what you, I agree with what you're saying, Justin, and that's why, that's what I'm saying, that we're, we're not. We, we're the one that told him to go out and put the numbers together for the whole department and how it would be if he was gonna do it the way that he wanted to do it. We're just asking tonight for the opportunity to create the department. We're not saying what the budget's gonna be, because we get final say on the budget. Remember, that budget's gotta come to us and we're gonna say, well, we don't wanna spend this much on this engineering department, cut it down to here. We get that say, this number we're talking about tonight has nothing to do with what the real number will be, it's just an example.
Right, and, and I, I completely agree with that and I understand that, but I think in the voting process or the, when making a motion tonight, well, maybe let's keep that open-minded that if this does happen, it doesn't mean we're gonna hire four people, maybe we start this as a phase project and because it's something never been done in Kennedy and, and honestly, we, we just need to be honest. It's, it's something in small communities that's not normal, which is fine. We, we can be the leaders and innovators into this, but maybe in, in the consideration tonight, we need to think about that.
I agree with Justin, I think, I think we should scale it back just a little bit, I, I mean, you, you have a good idea, but, Mr. Lynn, but I think Justin's correct, this is something like I said from the last meeting, this is something where we've never been, let's scale it back a little bit, let's go into this easy a- and then build on it if we need to.
Well, I, I agree, Councilor, and, and, you know, the, the object was to bring the number to you guys as I envisioned the department in its final stages, okay? So what you have depicted here is a final stage number. Um, it, it's gonna take probably several months to staff it. Um, and there's no sense in staffing, trying to staff four people in a department like that all at once. It, it'd just be too burdensome to everybody con- concerned, I mean, all the interviews and, and all that. So I agree, and I agree with Councilor Meyer, he's on the right path, that if we're gonna do it, we, we create the department. But we create the department with the stipulations that we take two. Either we, we do a mechanical and a mechanical tech, or we do a civil and a civil tech. But you do need the tech to go with the engineer, um, that's, that's very important. And so if the council decides here in a little bit to move forward with this, then we'll move to the next stage and we'll say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, this is the proposed idea. Uh, what's everybody thinking, are we good with doing just the two and moving forward? And then we'll create everything from there and then we'll move forward slowly and, and, and take care of it. I think everybody's got the right idea, there's, there's a lot of middle ground here and I think, I think it's all uniform, all going in the same direction.
Yeah, we get so caught up in numbers, we're not talking numbers tonight, all we're talking about is actually creating the department, that's it. Just creating a department and how we build and grow that department, that's on us, we get to decide that. Tonight, we're only talking about creating the department, that's it.
Right, and, and, and I understand what you're saying, Leslie, I just think in the idea of deciding to create the department, you, the numbers are there because we have to think about it. So I, I, I understand we're not saying, okay, let's create the department and dedicate six hundred thousand dollars to create this department. It's let's get each other's ideas, let's see what the majority of us think and let's just move forward. And I, and, and I, and I also think, you know, I know I was saying civil engineer and civil tech. Mr. Lynn, maybe, uh, uh, the best thing that you should do, and maybe I'll make the council even more comfortable, is when we come up budget time, look at the amount of money we've spent on civil engineering and look at the money we've spent on mechanical engineering and maybe, it might be like a seventy, thirty split. So maybe it's seventies percent, uh, mechanical, so maybe it makes more sense for us to go the mechanical route versus the civil route. I don't know and it could be vice versa and it could be pretty much right down the middle. But, but, let, let's even use more data when we go to the budget time and, uh, fund this if the council so chooses, to make sure that we are making the best decision for Kennedy, we're gonna be saving money and we even clip, considered and chose the best route to do so.
Right, no, that's right, right, right.
I just think, Mr. Lynn, if you can get some more numbers for us, um, that would be great. And add those and, and see, and all the stuff that I had said earlier, if you can add those extras, just so we can see it a little more clear. I, you know, I just don't like it to jump into something half-blind, you know? And so if you could just get all those numbers and kinda put it out on there on paper, then I think we can make a good decision on, like Justin said, on how many we should hire and which one we should.
Well, now, I, I agree, but that would be a, that would be a bad decision item, sorry, Councilor.
No, 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 I was just gonna say, and, and, and if we decide to create, create, um, the department tonight, if that's what the council chooses, what I was gonna say is, it's not like we're gonna have any type of overhead cost right now, unless you're expecting some overhead cost right now. Uh, and when we get to the budget, we'll have a line item by line item down, Brenda, is what I was gonna say. And he will, he'll have to break it down, because if he doesn't break it down and if it's not in that budget, he can't fund it. Uh, but I, so I, I know me personally, I would love to see, like, and I don't need it next council meeting or tomorrow, but if, if, if we approve creating the department, then I, I know that I would love to see which side are we gonna save more money on, because that's, that's the way I'm gonna wanna go. Um, as, as long as it financially makes sense and, and we see that there's the actual need. So if the department's created, it's budgeted, we go year-through it and we don't save any money, like, you know what I mean? We, we're using it just as a-
Right, right. Right, I agree with you, Justin, I, I see what you're saying and it's gonna be lined item and I just, I just want us to have it all right in front of us, you know what I'm saying? Just so we make a good decision.
But, but we're not, but we're not, that's, that's the thing, we can't make a motion tonight for a, a line item. We can't do that, all we're talking about doing tonight is establishing an engineering department, period. No dollar amount, no, no amount of people, none of that. And then after we make that decision, all that other information can come, because when we put together a budget, the budget's gotta have every line item in there for whatever we're gonna try to do. But if we don't decide to establish it, there's no reason for them to go out and get more information, because we don't, we don't have a use for it.
Right, I understand, Leslie, I, I know what you're saying, that's what, uh, what I meant. If, if we agree to this, then just so we can have those numbers and those things ready, so when we go to budget time, we have it ready to look at and make a decision, that is all I'm saying, I agree.
I agree with that, yeah, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
If we sit through it or not, if we're not gonna approve it, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any movement?
Let me make a motion to go ahead and take action on item ten in creating an engineer department for the city of Kennedy and then come back to discuss staffing at a later date.
Second?
I second that.
I'll second. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please follow the roll.
I'm, I'm gonna be real. I have one more thing, so if we, once we, uh, we approve this department and we go to budget time and we're looking at it and like Justin said, it just doesn't make sense to do it, then we don't have to do it, right?
We don't have to do it, we just take it out of the budget and, and we don't have to do it.
No, for example, like the county, they, the county did this, uh, two years ago. They, they created an H R department, like an individual H R department and not use the county treasurer as the H R. And then new commissioners court came in and they decided not to staff it. And so just because we create the department, doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. It just gives the city manager direction to budget the numbers for the budget, we can create the budget. Then when it comes to hiring, if we decide we don't want that, we don't have to hire the engineers and then which the, the department would not happen.
Okay, I just wanna make, okay, I'm good.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
There's no other discussion, please follow the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Stein?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number eleven, consideration of possible action in regard to the authorization to advertise for bids for building B at the Larry Keesling Youth, Youth Sports Complex. Any movement?
Make a motion to sc- item number-
What was the motion? Okay, discussion.
Hey, so we have, uh, talking building B. So we have the, uh, second concession stand that was part of the original plan. Time's now to decide to put this out for bid or not put it out for bid. Um, we have a concession stand, building A, which also has restrooms and doubles of this, uh, announcer's box as well. Uh, this one is supposed to go over near, forgive me if I missed this word, miss say this word, Aranis Ariana Field. Um-
Arena?
Thank you. Uh, this one, this one's supposed to go. So what we would end up having at the sports complex is, um, you have the, uh, the one field that's by itself in the parking lot, then you have the complex, and you would have two concession stands, a main concession stand and a, uh, a satellite, if you will. So, um-
And that, that-
So we gotta decide what we're gonna do with it, whether we, whether we're gonna do it or not. I have preferences, but, you know.
That, that concession stand would be the concession stand that was for that single field, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and the other concession stands is quite a walk from the single field over to the, to the other concession stand, right?
Yes, sir.
And the one-
What are the engineering? But, uh- Go ahead, Leslie.
One of the reasons that we had looked at that prior was because we didn't want the kids being so far by themselves trying to go to the concession stand.
Yes, sir.
That, wouldn't the field be locked the, into the concession, to the complex anyway? To get into that concession stand if it's not being used?
Well, we only have one, it would always be, it would always be used because it's the only one that could be used. But like I said, the reason that that one was set up is because it was, it's, it's quite a distance between where that field is at and where the concession stand is at. And, you know, me as a parent, I'd be uncomfortable letting my child walk from that distance over there, especially if they're, you know, the younger kids. And I think that field is for the younger kids to play in because it's a smaller field, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we know what the estimated engineering cost on this is supposed to be?
Um, when I asked Mr. Hall to give me a budget set up, he, he kinda brought it in around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, after I visited the site of where it's supposed to go and I'm looking at where it's supposed to, and all that, I personally have my own views about some things about the concession stands. Um, but, uh, they're design flaws, every last one of them. Um, I don't think we need a concession stand the magnitude of what B is designed to be if we're gonna put one over there. Um, especially since it's only gonna service one field and not gonna have the same capability as designed as the other concession stand is. And, um, I think that the, the engineering, the engineer's projected cost of three hundred thousand dollars is probably more money than we need to spend on a concession stand to serve one field. Um-
Well, that, and, and now, that was, that was my question, but, and, and now that we, as a council, you've kind of understood your side of it. Mayor Sutton, can you explain a little bit more? Um, are you in preference of this concession stand and the design, or where do you stand on it?
Where I stand on it is the Parks Board made the decision for B approved it, City Council approved it, and that's where it is. If it was my money, I would spend it, I would get the bid now for it. If we can afford to do it, let's do it. Uh, we keep talking about being over budget. Um, let's make sure that we get the bid, but if it's something that needs to be done next budget, we may wanna consider that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can they, can the engineers, I don't know, I don't know if this is gonna cost more money, can they scale it down a little bit or no?
I would, I would tell more money to redesign it, that's what I believe.
It would cost money to redesign it because every time the engineer does work like that, but they can scale it down.
I would, I-
Because I- Yeah, I specifically asked Mr. Hall that when we walked, whenever I was out there walking it.
But that concession stand also, uh, because I think later down they want soccer fields or something in that area. Would that concession stand also service that? If that happens?
No.
I don't know.
No, not with, uh, not with where I'm looking to put soccer fields.
No, Brenda, that, uh, that concession stand is specifically for the Johnny Bear at Anus Field. That's the big Little League field, that's the favorite Little League field, so there's nothing there. They haven't had a, they've had a shoddy rest, uh, concession for many years and no restrooms.
Yeah, I remember there wasn't any bathrooms back there. Okay, I was just curious if it would service anything else besides just that field. I, I was just curious.
Does the concession stand, uh, does this building B concession stand have restrooms in it? It does-
The design did have a rest-
There's no bathrooms on that side right now, right?
That's correct, or except for building A.
Right.
I mean, it, it, you know, I, I can see putting restrooms there, definitely have them. That's, that's n- not even a, an issue. I just, you know, I, I don't know. I, I think-
I agree with Leslie though. I hate to see my kiddo go across that busy parking lot to go which is the concession stand on the other side. And, I mean, my kiddo's eleven, but he's, he's, or what he's thinking about is going over and get that back of that concession stand. And so I would have a problem with him going across, you know, by himself or- So I see Leslie's point too, that it's, it's kind of an endangerment for our kiddos to be crossing over that parking lot to that other concession stand.
Yeah, I, I really wish that-
You know, we put it, and you know, we put it out for bid, bid may come in a whole lot better than what we, what, uh, handsome, you know? Every nan then, they, 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 their, their numbers are to our advantage.
That's, that's what I was about to say. Maybe, maybe, maybe we should just take it out to bid, see what the bids come ba- back at, and then consider going forward, or is it worth redesigning the facility? Um, but, yeah, I, I agree with Leslie and Brenda.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, it is always uncertain discretion bid or not. So, doesn't it, the only thing it costs us to put it out for bid is the cost to run it.
So then I'll, I'll make a motion that we go out for bids for the sports complex, building B.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to authorization to advertise for bids for building C at the Larry Keesling Youth Sports Complex. Any movement?
I'll make a motion to consider item twelve on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
And what is building C? The restroom. And my understanding from all parties concerned, the restrooms were supposedly to be at near the basketball court, and then they requested to move them closer to the, um, playground area for the children. So that's where they're scheduled to go. However, after being out on site, and Mayor, I'm gonna ask you this question directly since you precede me here, is what, why did, why was the decision not, A, we were moving the restroom from the basketball court, go ahead and move it between the softball field and the playland? That would keep the kids from having to cross the entryway. So I'm kinda curious, I understand why it was moved where it was to minimize the kids being on the road, I get it. Well, why wasn't it moved in between those fields? I'm just curious, just looking for information.
Um, I believe it has to do with infrastructure. Originally, it was closer to the Johnny Bear at Anus Field. It was right at the edge of the parking lot, closest to Johnny Bear. And it didn't make sense to have it all the way over there for anybody in the entire park to have to walk all the way over there. So we thought about other centralized locations and people came up with the ideas that, hey, we're running out of space, there's not enough room. Let's put it on a part of the property that is centrally located to the entire park. And that's where they decided it was gonna go. It was right by the, by the monument. So it's close to the park, it's close to the pavilions, uh, the utilities are close. That's my understanding.
Okay, I was just curious because I've had several mothers ask me that question. And after I got to thinking about it, I thought, yeah, you know, for kids' safety, you know, put it between the two. But, yeah, so, yeah, that's, I'm just curious, thank you for your information there.
Definitely.
And that's just for bathrooms? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's just bathrooms.
Okay.
And we're counting the-
Do we have a cost estimate for that?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, two or three people talking, I can't understand what's going on.
Yeah.
Do, do we have a cost estimate for that?
The engineer brought it in at the same as building B, three hundred thousand. So again, going out for bid, that number could fluctuate higher or lower.
How many bathrooms is that going to be? Do you know?
It's gonna be a men's, a men's and a women's. And, um, I really didn't, you know, look into detail to see how many toilets were gonna be in each one.
Okay, so we-
But, thing is gonna be restroom, so I would imagine it's a couple of toilets in there, each one.
It has to be, uh, and it has to be handicapped accessible, so I'm sure that has a cost to it too.
Yeah. It'll have to be-
Same, same situation, we can, you know, we can put it in paper, get the bid, and make the decision on whether it's feasible or affordable. I think we do need to get the bid.
I agree with that, Leslie.
I do too. So I'll make a motion that we go out for bids for the sports complex, building C.
Second? Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to amending the Kennedy Ford B Corporation twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item thirteen on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Discussion.
Amanda, is there anyone from the floor?
Sorry?
Is there anyone from the floor B who's gonna present this to council?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, all righty then. Okay, um, so do you all have the little, uh, table that was in your packet regarding this?
Yeah.
Okay, so essentially what the Ford B is wanting to do is they're wanting to take the, um, the items in the top and all those dollar amounts, and they're wanting to reallocate them to the line items in the bottom. And since, of course, it's a budget, the, the, the council has to approve them relocating the funds to those line items. And they're doing this in order to pay for some of those additional expenses that were not part of the original scope of, of the plans. Uh, there are some things in here that, you know, could be questioned as to whether or not we need to do them or not. But, you know, without a member of the four B presenting it tonight, I mean, it would just be me talking and I'm really not at liberty to do that right now, um, without them being here to say anything. So, uh, this would be on the table for you guys just to approve, to move, to let them re- redesignate the money.
William?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Make sure I understand this, they're just wanna reallocate the money, correct? It doesn't increase their budget?
That is correct, Mayor, they just wanna do like we did last- but, except they just didn't do, you know, they don't have the ordinance out there, just asking permission to do that. It's, it's a wash. They're moving five hundred and seventy-seven thousand from a set of line items to other line items. It's not increasing or decreasing their actual budget.
Okay. What's the security fence rental dumpster? I mean, I know the rental, the security fence rental, the dumpster, where? Is that what's out there already?
There's nobody here.
No, that's, that's gone. Um, th- th- that's gone. We, 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 that's our fence that's out there now. Um, R.L. Rhodey had, had leased a security fence and put it up around the park, but then it, um, he'd gotten an extension, and then the extension was up and we had the fencing and he needed to get rid of it, so he sent the fencing back, we put our fencing up. But I believe that's the four B's portion of the fencing from that expense that R.L. Rhodey had.
And these are four B line items, and if there's nobody from four B, really, all we need to decide is whether we give them permission to move the money or not. What they, what they're doing with it is on the list here, but there's nobody, uh, from four B to tell us anything about it.
That is correct. I know some about some of these because I was in the four B meeting, uh, not this month, but last month. And, and we had gone over some of these things. Um, if council has some questions, I could probably attempt to answer them. Um, but essentially-
But essentially, aside all- Flat work, additional concrete around dugout, et cetera. What, what does that all entail? Do you happen to know what that is, sir?
I do. That, that is the, um, concrete work that they're wanting to do between the, uh, dugouts and the, um, uh, uh, goodness, I'm gonna mess it up here, where the pitchers practice. Uh, uh, bullpens, thank you. Um, so they wanna put some concrete there, and then they wanna put a, uh, uh, an eight foot by, uh, eight foot section on the backside of those bullpen so that the pitchers can walk, you know, on concrete into the outfield to go to the mound, that type of thing, all the way around the park. We have some, um, uh, uh, grates in the ground, those grates need to be raised up and, uh, needs to be concreted around that, uh, uh, for the, uh, the, the grass control and all that.
Oh, this wasn't included in the bond that we got?
No, sir, this is extra.
They're not asking for any more money, they're just moving money they already have from something else and moving it over to take care of those expenses.
That is correct. They're just wanting to move money to those line items so they can, and it was my understanding from the meeting that they would be writing the check. The city of Kennedy would not write a check and they would not reimburse us for it. It would come out of their funds is the way I understood it. Conflicts-
Complex security fence, what is that?
Um, there's two proposed fences for the park, um, one is a, uh, perimeter fence, and the other is an internal fence between the field. Uh, the way it's designed is that one of those fences, uh, will go between, oh goodness gracious, I get the numbers wrong here for you guys, the, the two softball fields, uh, right across the concreted area, and then between the softball field and the, and the baseball field, uh, that security fence would conjoin to the perimeter fence on both sides, and then the other baseball and softball field on the other side, it would conjoin to the, uh, perimeter fence, and then the two softball fields by the wide part of the, um, walkway where the archway's gonna go, they would come into the archway and join the archway. Um, so you have internal fences, which are supposedly designed to keep people out of the internal workings of the complex where building A is, and the, uh, perimeter fence is supposedly to be a deterrent, uh, from keeping people from getting into the complex, uh, altogether. And, uh, from what I've seen on that perimeter fence, it's only gonna be six foot high.
That's it, six foot?
That's what I've seen on the ma-
How, William?
That's gonna keep anybody out of there.
Well, the fence is not gonna, the fence is not gonna keep anybody out anyway, Brendan, uh, they just take a pair of wire cutters and sniff it and go through it. The fence is up there.
By way of money on it.
Well, let me, like, you let me finish, I'll help you understand that, the fence is up there.
Go ahead, that goes as long as.
Has the ability to say trespass. You, you, there is no fence, no perimeter, nothing there, if you're there, you're just out in the field. But if you are inside a fenced area, you are trespass.
Well, counselor, let me, let me say this, uh, the sports complex is funded by public funds, it is on city-owned property, and therefore you can't trespass. It, it, it's open, available to the public.
Thank you.
We can. The, the issue at hand, we could, you know, with a fence, the, the issue at hand is that we could say, hey, you're in that fenced area, but you're in that fenced area after dark. Well, well, we, you know, well, our park's technically closed, and that would be, you know, well, that would be applicable. The other thing is, from what I understand, it, I guess, people like to ride four-wheelers and that out there behind a, for whatever that is, and, uh, a fence would keep them out of that, but. Any, anything shy of that, it, it, it's not gonna do anything. But that, again, that's not why we're here tonight on this, not here to say yes or no to whether they can spend the money, we're here to say yes or no, whether they can move the money. So, you know.
Hey, William, let me give you a little bit more information on that, on that specific fence that you guys are talking about. That's, that's primarily to keep traffic out, right now you can drive up to the complex, you could back a truck between the bullpen and the batting cage, it's just not safe, there's no way to keep traffic out of there. And it would do all of those other things you guys are talking about, but primarily that's the big deal. People like to back up to these complexes and stuff, and when you've got hundreds of kids there, you really don't want them there, you wanna confine them to the parking lot.
That's good to know.
Yeah, that's good information, thank you Mayor.
There, there was, there was actually an, another fence, the first fence, which is eight foot tall, and it's an entire perimeter fence of the entire park, that is not included with any of this. And I believe four B paid for that, or has money for that from last year. And it would enc, it would enclose the whole thirty-two acres of the park. And, but that's.
Yeah, that, I would not.
So I don't want to s- to mis- mistake that fence with this fence.
Well, as long as, my issue's gonna be, and with, with fencing, is gonna be the fact that these, these are public, public parks paid for by public funds, so the public has a right to get to them unencumbered, um.
Definitely.
Plus, plus, what we're gonna look at doing is conjoining the trail from Joe Gully to Escondido to provide over two and a half miles worth of continuous trail. So any fence we put up, it, it can't encumber the walking trails at all.
No, it, it, it doesn't, what, what's been discussed with myself and, uh, four B and Escondido Creek Parkway, Galen Elke, there's gonna be a turnstile, to where you can walk through it, you could push a bicycle through it, but you couldn't bring a motor vehicle through it.
So they're gonna have ballers stood up.
What's that?
They're gonna have the ballers stood up, the poles that come up to where you can freely go between, but you can't get a vehicle through it.
Correct. That, that's my understanding. So, I mean, yeah. Go ahead.
But just as long as the trails are unencumbered, I mean, that in and of itself, two and a half miles of contiguous trails, man, you can't get that anywhere.
Right.
You know, I think that, that that, I mean, we're talking with the high school right now about them on August eighth holding the kickoff for cross-country, running that two and a half miles as part of their cross-country, uh, the very first cross-country meet of the year. And now I'm working with Sarah, uh, on that, and we're waiting for their attorney to get back with them to make sure everything's okay from them, but, yeah, I mean, that's just totally awesome. But, but again, I mean, I love the conversation about this, but again, just keeping, I just wanna make sure that I, that I keep it in the forefront, the reason why we're here with this is just to approve the moving of the money, not the spending.
I understand.
Okay, I just, just wanna, I mean, but I love the conversation, I think, I think we're all on the same page.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions? Does everybody understand that this, these things are not specifically for the complex? Many of these items are for the entire park.
Right.
Hey, if there's no other discussion, does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the movement of the money for the four B corporation on their two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Winn?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, item number fourteen, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution twenty dash seventeen, a resolution of the city of Kennedy creating a reopening policy due to COVID nineteen. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss the current item.
Does second?
Nah.
Item fourteen, some, oh.
Did, did someone second that?
Yes, I think Leslie did.
Discussion.
Okay, um, well, here we are. Wanted to get back together face to face. Um, I, uh, after, uh, after last month and watching the governor open up certain, he opened up, it became clearly evident that you can't not open up when swimming pools get opened up. Um, so, I felt that it'd be best for us, uh, as an administration and as a governing body to join hands and become unified in how we're gonna do this, and present something to the residents of the city of Kennedy that's clear, that outlines things specifically, and lets them know the direction we're moving and what we're gonna expect, and then also, you know, what's expected of us. Um, I believe that the, uh, policy which was reviewed by the attorneys, as well as the resolution, um, and what you have in front of you is a clean copy from the attorneys. Um, so, uh, we, we have everything in place, like it should be, at least according to the attorneys, and, uh, the language is where it needs to be. Um, I, I think that this is the right path to go down at this point in the reopening stages that the governor and the president are leaning towards, I think we're s- I think by doing this, we in the city of Kennedy are still, uh, being a leader in what we're doing. I, I reached out to TML lawyers regarding this, before we put this together, to find out who else had done this. Nobody else has done this yet, um, we could look at that from two sides of the coin. I, I wanna say that we're being leaders in what we're doing. Um, and I, I believe that our policy might become something other municipalities may choose to emulate. Uh, it provides the greatest level of protection that we can probably have shy of what we're doing right now, at least in my opinion. Um, we will, uh, move all meetings to the auditorium, so we can properly social distance. Um, the timeframes are set up to enable us to do the things we need to do as an administration, to make sure everything's ready to go. Um, coming back to face-to-face council meetings, waiting until our July meeting to do so, that gives us enough time to figure out the spacing, uh, to get a deep, a good deep clean, uh, figure out any snafus we're gonna have with the microphones, and whether or not we need to get more cables or what have you, get the logistics down of how we're gonna get people in and how we're gonna get people out, uh, and those type of things, so. Anyway, I, I told you all, I'll try to get you all back as quickly as possible, and this is, this is the effort to do so.
Sounds really good to me.
Me too, uh, the only one thing I, I just wanna add into that is, because of past council meetings that were held, um, in the auditorium, which I'm completely okay with, can we get some type of table skirting?
Yeah, we need that.
I would, well, I would, I already had planned on doing that, uh, people don't need to see our shoes and our socks when they're sitting out in there, uh, when we're conducting city business, they need to be focused on city business, not whether or not we're tapping our feet or anything like that, so. Uh, yes sir, I will see to it, we have something that covers the front of those tables.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sir.
Is there any other discussion? Everybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take action in regard to resolution twenty dash seventeen, a resolution for the city of Kennedy creating a reopening policy due to COVID nineteen.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Winn?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, item fifteen.
Motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Oh, hold on. Yes.
Yeah, can I say one, can I say one thing, it's not an agenda item or anything? I just wanna thank everybody for to- for tonight, this was a very, very productive meeting. We had different sides of the coin that we were able to talk about and stay focused on what we were there to talk about, I am proud of every last one of you, thank you so, so much.
Thank you Leslie.
Thanks Leslie, yes sir, thank you.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you guys, be safe.
Thank y'all.